All right, I'm going to call to order the November 12th, 2024 meeting of Eugene Electric Board. And I'll start with an agenda check. Any comments, changes from? Nope. Um, all right, items from board members and general manager. John?
Thank you. Please. Several items. Um, today I got this morning, I got to go to Walterville Elementary School and present present to awards to the students in the fifth grade class for our electricity. Uh, contest and both the first and second place kids came from the uh, from the same classroom. That's pretty exciting. And the kids explained what they did and everything. And it's always a fun thing to do. Sorry, I stucked in on yours, but I know you could make so uh, it was that. Um, the other thing, um, the uh, uh, just that ethics, we were required to take that ethics class. If you haven't done that, prepare for two and a half hours of fun times and and but there I did notice there are some things I think that Anne Anne was in the same class that we may be doing that we may need to change about like recording every vote, who voted and how they voted in the minutes. I think that's something that the state thinks that we're supposed to do. I'm not so sure we have to do it, but we'll figure that out. Um, the next thing is uh, um, I had attended the coffee with uh, with Laura up on the College Hill the other day and everything and well received and everything, but there was one problem. When you say coffee with Laura, wouldn't that imply there'd be coffee? There was no coffee and it was cold. So I would assume if we can have coffee at the next one, just a little sidebar there, but no, it was yeah, I think that the presentation from the uh, the blasting people and everything, it was very informative and I think the people in attendance, I counted 20. Um, it it was great. And the last thing is um, I'm going on my tangent again. Every year I I talk about getting after the communication people and make them trim the lines because when it snows and it gets ice, it drags our lines down and our repairs have to pay for cleaning up their mess. And this is what third year we talked about it and I'm not sure anything's happening. We're heading into that season again. We have another ice storm. Quest and Pacific looks last and all the people Comcast, their lines are going to take our lines down and we're going to have to pay for it. And if there's anything we can do about that legislative or not, I would like to to do that because it's not fair to our rate pairs to pay because those people don't want to trim the trees. So that's all my complaining for now. Thank you.
Are you sure?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. Fine. Others?
Um, I also had the opportunity to present for two of the poster scholarship or Foster Awards for the fifth grade. It was at Camus Elementary School in Edison. Two of our newer schools, they're both beautiful. Uh, it's, it was fun going into the fifth grade class and trying to answer the questions that they ask. I hopefully I did it well. One of them was uh, when a bird lands on the wire, how come it doesn't get electrocuted? I think I fielded that one. Okay. But there were, there were some other interesting questions, but it's a really, uh, it's a really fun time to interact with our fifth graders. Uh, the posters were uh, were good. Uh, you know, so the those two schools represented South Eugene. Well, we had uh, third, fourth and fifth. Uh, Walterville, I think had first and second. Um, but it's a, it's a real neat thing way to get out and energize our youth. That's it.
All right. I'll just take the opportunity to, I know we have an update on the uh, board, the E-Web and City Eugene combined meeting. I just want to thank Brown for stepping in my place. I was unable to attend that. And thank you for asking for helping find an alternate and Brown for stepping in. Anything from you Frank? And then we'll come back to Commissioner Carlson.
I'm sick.
Does that work? All right. She's saying she's waving on, so nothing from her.
Yeah, Commissioners, good evening. Um, just a couple of items. Um, one is that we are in uh, right now, what we call a warm ICS. So you understand incident command system. Um, some of that is in preparation. We're expecting potentially 40, 50 mile an hour winds this evening. And so um, as part of our preparation for situations like that, we have people um, ready to mobilize. And so we're in in uh, I'd call it warm or light ICS at the moment. I'm preparing for this evening. Um, I will follow up on the communications um, issue. Commissioner Brown, we have looked and at some point I I I'll have to double check this, whether we were actually putting storm recovery costs into some of our charges that we that we use for mounting on poles. So we are recovering some of that investment. Uh, we also have to note that um, of the number of poles throughout our system, we don't own all of them. And in some cases, we're the leasing, not necessarily the lease or of that. Um, other utilities have tried direct recovery of storm expenses. Um, too little to no response from the communications companies. And so um, beyond just our calculation for attachment fees, which is where this would be recovered. And I believe we have uh, put that in our calculation, um, that that um, a legislative solution would probably be the next option. And then I'll pass along, there is coffee provided at Coffee with Laura on special milestone occasions in the project. Um, you must have not been that special uh, for Laura to do that. So um, I'll make sure that she knows next time that a commissioner is is in the audience and coffee will magically appear.
All right. That's all. Then we'll go on to the next item. Before we go to the next, I'm going to do a quick facility and safety awareness and meeting logistics briefing. So thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, E-Web management and subject matter experts are present in the room and virtually the meeting is being live streamed and recorded. Uh, I encourage you all to speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. Public testimony is welcome. If you haven't already, sign up forms are available at the back of the room. Visitor access is limited to the board meeting room and the rest rooms. Bus stations are located on the first floor. Exit through the interior door at the back of the room over here and a security officer will direct you to the location. In the event of emergency, please follow instructions given by staff. And then I'll go to the next topic, which is an update from city manager Sarah Mederi on the City of Eugene fire fee. Whichever you prefer, either, yeah, up here is good. Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right. Thank you. So what is, what is green? That's good?
That's it.
All right. Well, thank you for uh, having us back again. It's an honor to be able to come here twice, especially on a a day where you have a super packed agenda. So we're going to, I'm joined by our assistant finance director Neil Obringer, who's been working a lot on the fire services fee and our assistant city manager, Matt Rodriguez is in the audience today. He has some handouts that not exactly sure what to do it, but I'll reference them a little bit as we go. The last time I was here, I didn't actually bring any slides. So I'm just, I'm not going to show as many as I've shown in some of the presentations that you've been at, but I do want to just pause for a minute and talk about the problem that we're trying to solve. And that is really related to our general fund. As you, um, we've been talking a lot about a fire services fee, but the city has about 35 different reporting funds. The general fund is one of those and it happens to be the fund that is our discretionary fund has historically funded police and fire and libraries and parks and and all those kind of foundational city services. When we, when I submitted the uh, 23 through 25 biennial budget, in addition to having about $30 million worth of cuts in it, and in one of the handouts, we'll actually give you some details about what those were. We also had an $8 million placeholder for new revenue. We gathered uh, revenue advisors. Mr. Borowski was one of those revenue advisors. So he is one of the people that dove deep into how are we going to kind of solve this, which is partly how we got to um, the fire services fee. And I think important to note that the general fund is not only it's kind of uh, a fund that has problems, but it's also the fund that often bails out the ambulance service fund, ambulance transport fund and parking fund. And any place we have other issues, we have to balance at the end of the year. So in a, in a even more simplified term, but I think it's important. The, in the general fund, about three quarters of our expenses, our employees and almost all the rest of it is the materials, equipment, supplies they need to do their job. And every year, uh, that plus whatever increases we have in our costs, our rates, our employee rates, all of those things has to equal what our revenue is. And we're not, we're not allowed to carry a deficit. So it balances every year. And so in the general fund, our top three uh, sources of revenue, the biggest one is property taxes, followed by the E-Web contribution of taxes. Thank you very much, E-Web. And then a much smaller piece just being fees for services. And in all of those cases, we have very limited control over what that is. Property taxes are capped at 3% per year. Um, contribution of lieu taxes is really based on what E-Web's needs are for the year. And then we, we gain some of that. But we're not able to set those rates. And so um, what I'm going to show is that, you know, for the last, probably my entire career, because my career started after the property tax measures went into place. I started with the city in 1996. I think almost every year of that, we've been making reductions to try to accommodate that because growth is often higher than 3%, especially when you're working through some of the market conditions. And I think, you know, between last year's the 24, 25, that was one budget year because we're doing a biennial budget now. Part of the reason we show this is because the, the implications of that year, every year, every year is at some point you have to figure out either we're really going to go deep or we're going to need to find some new revenue strategies. Again, I I offer a slide just because I, when we show so many of these, it starts to feel like it's like numbers and arrows, but there's actually services impacted. These are just three small examples of what happened last year. Which are things that aren't happening. So uh, we were going to cut a fire engine company and the council found a way to save that with using the payroll tax, but it meant we didn't, we weren't able to deploy a community response unit. We reduced 12 and a half FTE in the police department. In addition, we assumed a 2% vacancy. So they're kind of always in a little bit of a lag. And we reduced in the library, both in the main budget and also in the in the supplemental. This slide is always pretty interesting. I'm only going to show the general fund one, the citywide FTE for 1,000 has gone down. Last few years, but the general fund FD is pretty interesting. If you look at FYI 08 to now, you go from 5.8 per thousand to 4.6. But if you go back even farther to 88 pre-tax, we were at seven and a half. So that's, if you do the calculation on that, it's it's essentially that we have absorbed the entire population of the city of Springfield without adding any additional FTE. And the, the difference in calls for service in 1988, 3,000 calls for fire and EMS, and now it's over. This is why we, um, when we start talking about new fees and revenues, we also started to to center on on fire and EMS because we haven't added a fire, a firefighter paramedic since 19, since the 1980s. We have added basic life support. We've, we've innovated ways that we respond to service with lower levels. And so we've added FTE, but we haven't added firefighters and people. In fact, I think I saw my first advertisement on Facebook yesterday or from the fire union about this topic. Uh, when we start talking about fire service fees and and utility billing and all of that, which Neil's going to cover, starting on the next slide. Um, part of the reason that that fire made a lot of sense to me in particular, and why I think it's made sense across the state is it's a 24 hour a day, some day a week service that you can't really shut off. Uh, really depends on a lot of infrastructure. It's vital to our community wellbeing, our business community. And I equate it somewhere in there with our wastewater utility. It feels, it feels like essential city service in that same way. Um, and it also feels like something that doesn't feel like if you're going to have stability for the, for the community to have certainty and for us to be able to grow in time, it it doesn't make sense to backfill it with a short term levy. And so that's, that's really how we came to a servicing. City of Medford actually smartly put into place many years ago.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. So I'm going to dive into the rate development process that we've been going through over the course of the last several months. And I'm going to start by just uh, uh, describing to you uh, the other Oregon jurisdictions that we've, we've looked at as a model. We know that this is not just a a Eugene problem. This is a, an Oregon problem. The limitations of measure five and 50 have created a challenge for all Oregon jurisdictions uh, with the limitations that they place on property tax revenue. Uh, and and thus the, the challenge to uh, fund basic government services. Um, and so many Oregon jurisdictions, many of which we show on the slide here, have implemented a utility service fee or as a way to um, in a fair and capable way, help to fund uh, general government services. And so we've used these other Oregon jurisdictions as an example in a government as we uh, as we've developed our remodel over the course of the summer. And so just as we have learned from these other work, Oregon jurisdictions, uh, their best practices. Uh, these are some of the key themes and components that we've uh, kept in mind that have guided our work. So um, starting off, we, we know that we've needed a rate structure that would generate roughly $10 million annually in that revenue. Uh, we have landed on square footage of developed property as the basis for the fee. We know that some Oregon jurisdictions use water meter size or other metrics to um, uh, service basis for the fee. But we have square footage data readily available and it serves probably as the, the, the most logical nexus between the demand for fire services and the, the rate paid. Um, and so it's a logical basis for the fee. Uh, we also understand that there's uh, whatever rate structure we develop needs to apply in a logical way to both residential and commercial structures. Residential is relatively straightforward, but because of the um, uh, you know, many different iterations and complexities associated with commercial properties. Uh, we needed a rate structure that was simple enough to apply to, to both types of properties. Um, and that takes us to the, the final through line uh, with of all of our work. It really is keep it simple. We wanted a rate process and a rate structure that uh, was relatively easy to administer and simple and straightforward, both for customers to understand, but also um, that would ultimately reduce the administrative burden to collect um, and put as many dollars on the free as possible. So diving a little bit deeper into some of the fee considerations. Um, when we look at, so I, I mentioned earlier that we would intend to use uh, square footage of developed property as the basis for the fee. Uh, we have square footage data readily available from, from our lid um, that would serve as the, the basis for billing. Uh, we would then associate the square footage of developed property to E-Web accounts. So it would be, it would tie back to stormwater accounts. Um, and we have a mechanism already in place uh, through our stormwater fee to tie uh, developed property location to E-Web accounts. We have those mechanisms already in place and that will be relatively straightforward for us. We, our intention would be to tie the, the fire services fee amount due back to the stormwater uh, bill. So whoever holds and pays the stormwater bill ultimately would be paying fire services fee. Uh, our intention, we know that um, any new fee has the, has a uh, would provide a substantial burden to some members of our community. And so our intention would be to set aside 3% of uh, gross revenues uh, associated with the fire services fee to a uh, income based assistance program. Our intention would be to model it after the, the UW customer care program. And then finally, uh, we would structure this so that any revenues associated with the fire services fee would be set aside and accounted for specifically in a special revenue fund. So we would shift $8 million of existing fire services, which are housed in the general fund currently, shift those into the special revenue fund. And then any new services uh, associated with the implementation of the fire services fee would also be accounted for in that special revenue fund. And so now we can take a look at the, the actual proposal that we have on the table for uh, the rate structure. So you can see, uh, we have uh, the rate categories on the, the left-hand side. Um, grouped by square footage. So we would determine the total number of square feet associated with each stormwater account and based on the, the square feet associated with that stormwater account. Um, associate the appropriate uh, monthly billing cost. So when we look at where the majority of our residential accounts occur within this rate structure, about 90% um, can be found within the, the grouping highlighted here. So 750 to 3,500 square feet, that accounts for roughly 90% of our residential accounts. Um, and when we look at the, I should say, both going back to on the residential side, the, the median residential customer under this scenario uh, would fall within the, the 1,500 to 2,500 square foot grouping and pay $10 per, per month. So now, when we look at the commercial side and the commercial accounts within our data, uh, we can see that roughly 65% of total commercial accounts um, can be found within this 50 to 10,000 square feet range and will pay um, somewhere between three and $38 uh, per month per account. Uh, with the median commercial customer paying that $38 per account for funding. And then when we expand that out, um, we, we can, so we can say that in the 50 to 30,000 square feet range, um, that cup, that covers about 90% of our total commercial accounts. So once you start to get into these um, these higher square footage ranges, um, which logically makes sense, the number of total accounts impacted uh, decreases dramatically. And so I think with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah again.
So um, I'm going to talk a little bit about our next steps with council and exec team, but I also will include in our next steps with, with E-Web because all of those numbers are, you know, we're working towards what we hope to be the most efficient way of doing this would be working together on billing, but we know that's maybe not possible. And if so, some of those numbers might, might adjust a little bit. The council started talking about this long before this fall, but this is sort of our fall uh, conversation. Next week they have a public hearing and uh, that's on Monday night and then we'll turn around on Wednesday night. We'll have a work session with them to see like, okay, are there other things they might want to see? We've been trying to set them up for potential action in December so that we could implement by July. That's a best case scenario. There's a lot of work that would have to happen here um, to either be able to work with E-Web to do it or to uh, find another vendor or a different way of administering it to do that. We also know that council may make a different choice and say, we're not ready to do this. And in that case, we'll be meeting with them starting in January on, on where they want to set some of those service priorities for the next sort of $10 million plus probably worth of cuts. So at the same time that we've been developing a revenue proposal, we've also been working as a team to develop what are some of those reduction scenarios? Uh, which most people want to know what they are. What are you going to cut before I decide? And, and I've been hesitant to do that other than to show like, here's where we've been taking cuts. So people can kind of make that leap because we don't want to start a whole lot of uh, too much concern in the, in the organization. So we have, we're here to answer questions as much as you would like, and thank you.
Thank you. Both questions?
Brown? Thank you. I've got questions and a comment. Um, so uh, just the nexus. So over 80% of the calls for the fire department are not for fire. They're for medical. Correct? Well, 83% I think is a statistic. So I don't get the nexus about if I've got a 300,000 square foot building and you're charging me based upon the size of my building for fire fee, but 80% or 83% of all the calls in this community are for medical and not for fire. Well, how do you relate that?
Well, I think um, I want to double check on your number.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I will. I'm not saying you're wrong. I just uh, want to double check that. But I think, you know, we're looking for a way, where does it make sense? And, and I hear what you're saying about the numbers of calls, but when you start thinking about different ways of billing, whether it's a uh, allocated by a water meter size or acreage or any of that, it, it made the most sense. And, and the bigger the building is, the more resources we send. So for example, you, as soon as you get to five stories and higher, we're sending multiple engines, multiple battalion chiefs. So the cost of service is actually quite high when we make those calls. And a lot of those places and, and, and a lot of those housing complexes have significant numbers of medical costs.
Um, so there are no sacred cows, churches, University of Oregon, school district, everybody's paying this, correct?
That as proposed, yes.
And even including government, uh, the city of Eugene and Lynn County, everybody pays it no matter what. Okay.
As proposed.
As proposed. Okay. And then um, I'm going to have a trouble approving this for an E-Web bill. We just raised our bills $30 a month on average. And now we're going to raise them again for something that has nothing to do with E-Web. Um, and telling the, the single mother with two kids that, you know, we're going to shut your water and electricity off because you can't pay this E-Web bill that now has three elements that aren't related to water and electricity is, is hard for me to get past. So you're going to have to help me get there because if we could build a different way, I'd have a different perspective on it. But right now, until I hear more, um, I think this has to go through us, correct? Because I, I, you know, this, to me is, it's the same thing, silt compensation, lieu taxes, the ordinance says 3%, but yet we pay 6%. And that's what happened a long time ago. And, and we're paying twice as much as it says in the ordinance and Frank, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, doesn't the ordinance say 3, 3%? But we're paying 6%. So 6% of all our revenues go to the city. And I see this as, it's discretionary. And so now it's so many dollars per square foot. Three years from now, it could be anything. And we could be just down that path. And I don't really want to open that up because this is a vital commodity that we provide our people and they have to have it. They don't have a choice. So um, just help me get through this. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, I think um, I'll say a couple of things, you know, the cities that have been able to do this or gracefully have been cities where they are also billing, they are also providing the utility and that's not uncommon. So we are, we will always find ourselves, I think, in this place of, of having to work together. And, and, and what I can say is we share your value around not wanting to shut off anybody's power not paying this fee, which is why we're looking at what is the contribution, what would we include in that would go into the uh, customer care account. If we do it that way, and if we, if we can find another way to do it, if it doesn't work out, we'll just keep plugging away. Yeah, yeah.
Others? Mindy?
Well, thank you for that presentation. Um, my question is, is really just about the, the bill. Um, I imagine there's probably some way we can redesign our bill or rebrand our bill so that it doesn't just look like it's coming from E-Web. Especially um, if we add this fee and we have the stormwater fees and then who knows in the future if there's other fees, it's not really an E-Web bill anymore. It's a E-Web and City of Eugene. So that would just be my concern was, would be just how do we redesign the bill so it doesn't seem like it's all coming from E-Web?
Frank?
I think we should say, oh, sorry. It's called the City of Eugene bill. I think we should call it the City of Springfield bill. And then we, we'd all be covered that way. I, I think Commissioners, the, the direction we got previously was we needed to evaluate this uh, in collaboration with the city to evaluate the efficiencies of billing separately versus billing, uh, sharing the billing. Um, as I think Sarah mentioned, there's a number of different uh, details that we would have to work out. Um, it's uh, I think good news to hear that the city is looking to allocate a certain amount of this fund toward uh, limited income support. Um, you know, whether that could be used to help with the sort of the disconnect order that that Commissioner Brown is concerned with or not. I'm, I'm not sure. There's just a lot of details that we would, we would have to work out. Um, relative to the administrative handling of it, but um, our work with the city right now is to look at the options and look at this from a broad perspective and say, is it overall more efficient for the community to do one thing or the other? And what would E-Web's role be in that? And if so, what are the restrictions that, that uh, we would be concerned with? And so I think that's, that's our role and that's, that's what, what they're evaluating as well.
So you?
So it sounds like we don't have an idea of what an alternative, I mean, we need to go out to, or you would need to go out to bid to find if there was an alternative vendor and how much that would cost versus our administrative burden to, to weigh those two options. I mean, if you're going to go forward with this either way, then, you know, having it such that we get the biggest bang for our buck as a community is a benefit. Can the vendor actually provide services for those who need it? Um, is, is another question. I mean, we already have a customer cares program. Would the vendor be able to? Would the vendor be able to administer a customer cares type program, is another question that I, we don't know the answer for that, maybe you do.
Commissioner, that's a great question, and we have done some preliminary assessment of the market, we've done an RFI for contracted billing, just to get an initial touch of, you know, is there anybody out there that could provide this service? What are the ranges of services that they could provide and the rough cost? We would need to do, you know, another RFP and dive deeper to really evaluate that in more depth, but we have some initial cost estimates there. At that point, during the initial RFI, the income-based assistance program wasn't part of that evaluation, we need to evaluate that through the RFP process. We've also done a similar RFI, but for the cost of implementing a software system in-house, if we were to, instead of choosing a contracted billing solution, use city staff to essentially implement the billing in-house. So we have some initial estimates of what the costs are, but again, they'd have to be continued work would need to be done to really vet that out.
Another question, then, if the city said, hey, E-Web, go do this, we don't really have a choice in the matter to say.
Stormwater is codified, or stormwater wastewater is codified, the other, this isn't codified.
Yeah, I was just gonna add a little bit of context to that effect, Commissioner Carlson, but I can't remember if it's by code or by charter, we're required to bill for it. I believe it's called something like fluid services, or something like that, which would handle wastewater and stormwater. There are, any other billing would be, just because of its profile, I've made the decision that that would be a board decision. And yet, I should point out, we already bill for the city. So we build those, we build those two services, I think they're well distinguished on our bill, the difference between the city of Eugene portion and your electric and water portion, those are easy to distinguish if you look at the bill. I think the challenge is, a lot of people don't look at the bill, they just look at the total amount at the bottom, and in that case, it would be diluted. But we already do that, we're required to do that for those services, but any other service on top of that would be optional.
And then, two other quick questions. One, does the, does the, would we have the ability, or could we have the ability to exclude that if, from a non-pay situation? You know, if you don't, obviously, we don't want to do that, but maybe we don't turn off if they haven't paid that portion, is that something that we could implement?
So presently, when someone makes a partial payment, or they're in a situation where they're disconnected, the partial payment is sort of applied to all of the different portions of the bill, water, electric, proportionally. We're actually in a bit of a challenging situation to answer that question, Commissioner, because we are putting in our new customer information system, billing system, to have a separate collection cycle, which is where you would disconnect for one thing and not another, might be challenging for us in this initial stage, so we're unclear whether we could do that as a sort of bifurcated way of, we're gonna disconnect for one purpose and not another, we're not quite sure of that at this point.
Okay. I am very concerned about our most vulnerable in our community. I also recognize that our fire services system is also a vital portion, it's what we need in this community, much like electricity and water. And it's challenging that we have costs across the board that are raising. I don't want to put people in a position where we're turning their water and electricity off, because they didn't pay a fire fee that's now added on. But I also want to get the biggest bang for our buck, and I want to make sure that we have fire services. It's getting hotter out there, it's getting drier, if we don't take care and beef that up, we're gonna be in a real problem when we have more fire, and then when we have a major fire that wipes out a portion of the city, people are gonna go, well, why didn't you implement the fee back in such and such day? So we're in another kind of no-win situation. It's, if it's more efficient for us to do it, and we can protect the most vulnerable, then I would bite my tongue and support it. But I want to make sure that it's kind of the last option, that's where I'm at, thanks.
Thanks, Borowski.
Thanks. I wish I, when the agenda check came up, I wish I had pushed you guys to the back, that's usually where I end up when I have to testify in front of city council until ten-thirty. Missed my opportunity, but, so I'm gonna just, I've seen the presentation a few times, as Sarah mentioned, I was part of the revenue committee that looked at all different options to help us find a way to do this. But I'm gonna just kind of lean into my E-Web hat here. I'm kind of with Sonya here, in the fact that if the, if city council decides to move forward with this, there's gonna be a fee, and there's gonna be costs to administrate that fee. Now, if we do it, the cost will be less, we know that, than if it's up to them. So if we say no, the cost to the citizens of Eugene is gonna be higher, they're gonna have to recover, because they've gotta get that ten million dollars. So if it costs them ten million dollars and five hundred thousand to administer it, the fee to our constituents is gonna be higher. The other thing that I look at is, they're talking about giving three percent for customer care, which is three hundred thousand dollars a year. Three hundred thousand dollars a year, the number of people that would do that to get ten dollars per month, is the logistics of that is just untenable. People, you know, you might get some, they may use, of that three hundred thousand dollars, they may use fifty thousand dollars to offset that, whereas if they give us three hundred thousand dollars that we can put into our overall customer care, we're helping a whole lot more people than would be eligible to use it to offset their ten dollars. And the cost to the community is less. So, your argument about them being turned off, I understand that, that our bills are going up, and it's E-Web at the top of the letterhead, and when they come in here and say, our rates are too high, we hear it, our phone rings on that one. But, in the overall arch of this, if the city council decides to move forward with this, to me, it makes sense for us to be the one to help the city to build this, and to use the city's leverage to help us help our customers, more of our customers that are challenged with paying their bills, because I could see after five years, that three hundred thousand dollar fund could be two and a half million dollars that's just sitting there, not being utilized by the most vulnerable people in our community. And so, for that reason, I would lean towards us working with them to find the fairest and most equitable way to build this. That's just my take on it. As far as the presentation, and some of the issues, as far as square footage, and some of the things that I've heard throughout the community, I'll leave those to public hearing next Monday night, because there are issues that I think that the city needs to hear about on those, from the business community, from our ratepayers, and all of those types of things. But as far as my duty as an E-Web commissioner, I lean into partnering with the city on this one, to help our ratepayers the best we can. And that's if and only if city council moves this forward. We'll have another discussion once that decision's been made. Thank you.
Did I hear a motion to move the rest of this to the end of the meeting? No. Thank you for the presentation, I have, I guess, similar thoughts, the justification and thinking about how to put this fee together all makes sense to me, and the way you've structured it. It does seem to me like there's a natural opportunity to make sure that we're doing the most, not only cost-effective, but sensible thing in terms of how people understand the fees that they're paying. So, I've always thought that the city fees on top of the E-Web bill is a little strange, but I totally understand the reasoning for it, I'm supportive of that, but it does feel like when we're tipping to a spot where they're actually have more city fees than we have E-Web rates on our bill, that it's a good chance for us to take a closer look. So from my perspective, getting a clear sense of what that cost would be to have a third-party would be valuable, and if it's not more than, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more to do it separately, I think there's value there, just from our communications standpoint, because we do spend a lot of time talking with folks about rates and their bills and whatnot. But, all things being equal, I agree, like, we want to do this in the most cost-effective way for the people that we collectively serve. John?
Some logistics question, so, you want to move this forward in December? We've got one more meeting this year, so, and this has you to be able to have the permission to do this, this board has to approve it, correct?
So the council can make a policy decision about if they want to implement it or not before you decide?
Right, but then it still takes, and where do you see that coming in timing? Because I think the business community is not too supportive of this at all.
Commissioner Brown, I think that the first step, it's really step-by-step, and there's a few steps in here, one is, if council directs city manager Maderi and staff to pursue this, they have to look at their options, we have to then work with the city on what the implementation would look like, and cost, and what the impacts to E-Web would be as a next step. It wouldn't be appropriate to bring anything back to the board until we understand that further, and until we can vet that some with the community. So, it's gonna probably be a number of months back and forth with the city to work out lots of details, and then develop a communications plan around that as well. And then, and I think Commissioner Maderi said July, roughly, for potential implementation. We also have to look and see how that fits in with our changes to our billing and customer system. So there's, I wouldn't expect this to come back to the board for several months.
Other comments from you, or questions or comments from board? Thank you both. All right, the next item is correspondence.
That's me again, commissioners, so there were three items of correspondence this evening. Thank you, city manager Maderi, and Matt and staff, thanks. There were three in your background materials. The first one was just some additional detail, I know we talked a little bit about the community table and the feedback relative to our energy planning, there was some additional detail as to the process and some of the conclusions associated with that. Jason, who I know is listening in this evening, available for comment, provided a little bit of update on some of the potential legislative trends and potential legislation that could get teed up, that's directly relevant to E-Web. This is before we actually take a position on anything that looks like it's developing, this is just a heads-up on, these are a few of the categories and areas of potential legislative work in Salem. And then the third one, we did this primarily this quarter because of both agenda time, the next few agendas are really packed, and also, the third quarter results, we tend to spend the most time on the year-end results, which we'll do early next year, but just some project updates, updates relative to our financial position, which was definitely challenged in the early part of the year on the electric utility, water utility is in good shape relative to its budget and its projected outcomes. And so those were the three items of correspondence, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that commissioners may have on any of those, or take back comments on any of the topics.
Great.
By the way, President McCray, these were, unlike some of our correspondence items, where we're actually asking for direction or guidance, these were really provided for information only, so if you had questions about it, we'd be happy to answer those. Yeah.
Yeah, the only input that I would have is on the first one, on the community table sessions. I went through and I read through that, and I've been in several of those type of focus group, you know, listening sessions type of a deal, and I hope that we're stressing to, because when you go to people and say, what do you want? They're always gonna want everything, right? I want clean power, I want low rates, I want reliability, I want all of this. And that showed up in the charts that we saw, but I just want to make sure that we emphasize to these people that are coming and spending their time with us, time, and it's valuable time, and a good group of people that are coming, that we have to make, these are trade-offs that we need to make, and we can't have it all. And so, making it clear to them that, yes, we're hearing what you're saying, but we also have to make the hard trade-off choices, and by doing that, we may, they may feel that we're not listening to them, when we are listening, but we can't say yes to everybody and everything. And I just want, I hope that that message goes out when we're starting these listening sessions, so that it doesn't look like we're just taking a listening session and then putting it on a shelf somewhere. Because that's, I've been involved with those, but it's hard to ask the question, what do you want? You almost want to say, what would you like to give up? Would be the easier part for us, to hear, what would you rather not have than what do you want? So, I just, I read through it, and I was interested, because everybody said, yeah, I want this, this, and this.
Thanks, John. Frank?
Yeah, Commissioner Borowski, we definitely understand the points you're making. What's, we made a couple of, we stressed a few things relative to this particular community table. One was, this is a series of meetings with this group, the first one was couched as sort of overarching, and understanding what some of the primary drivers are. We will take a deeper dive into what some of those trade-offs are as some of the next steps, recognizing that we live in the land of and, we want safe and reliable and affordable and environmental and equitable, and the list goes on. I think the other thing that we've stressed with this group is, it is not an advisory board, in the sense that we are looking for a consensus recommendation, this is to test the extremes, and to test the variety and levels of different perspectives that we get, and so your point is well-taken, I do think it's consistent with how we're approaching this.
Great, thanks. Other comments? All right, we'll move on, please.
No, it's it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, sure. All right, we'll move on to public input, we have four folks here in the room with us today. I'm gonna start with a quick overview to brief folks who are gonna provide input. First, welcome to the meeting, and E-Web is a public, not-for-profit organization, whose charter is to deliver drinking water and electricity to our community. Although this forum is not used for an open back-and-forth dialogue, commissioners and staff value hearing diverse perspectives and receiving community input. Speakers are advised to keep their testimony relevant to E-Web business, and request that everyone share their comments in a productive and respectful manner. Should speakers or audience members become disruptive, they may be muted and/or removed from the meeting. At this time, we have four folks in line, there's nobody calling in, it's all in-person. When your name is called, you'll have up to three minutes to provide your comments, there is a timer on the front to help you keep track, and the public input session is now open. We will start with Isaac McCoy Solentik, followed by Dan Carroll. Isaac?
Hello, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I listened to one of the meetings from perhaps a month ago on YouTube, it's a little hard to see, tell who's speaking at what time, after a while, you get to learn people's voices. The discussion was about the BPA decision coming up, and then the public process that Mr. Borowski just mentioned. One of the comments from a commissioner was that it felt a little performative, and I would urge the group to move away from that, as Mr. Borowski said, the request for the experts from E-Web to not use numbers, I think reiterated that sort of performative aspect. I understand the desire to have a high-level discussion, but the number of times they mentioned it, they clearly felt hamstrung, I think, in the conversation, and it didn't feel productive, listening in on YouTube. listening in on YouTube anyway. When the Lieberg project was presented in public forums, what I recall, and perhaps it was much earlier processes involving the community, but you presented, I think, four distinct options. And I would encourage you to take that approach with the BPA decision come up coming up. There is deep institutional knowledge here, lots of experts, lots of knowledge that the community members don't have. And if you present us what's possible, trying to align with the values that you've heard, I think it's a much more efficient process and a much more empowering process for the community, knowing that you are working on all the trade offs FERC and BPA and all this stuff that I don't have the knowledge around, but the sort of blue sky, you know, what can we dream up feels inefficient. You know, Commissioner Borowski alluded an hour into that meeting that there's already been a lot of work done instituting systems that will help us in the next iteration of the BPA contract. And it'd be nice to know what they are. Nobody wants an inefficient process. We're not trying to redesign everything. If you've already invested money in this, then let us know what it is and what it leads us towards. And if the community has an outcry and says, wow, no, 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 then I think that's an easier place to start than what do you want? You know, I one other, another point I just wanted to make sort of ancillary to that was the rate discussion. There's a lot of talk about how many years EWEB held rates to zero, and now we're at a double digit increase, I think, for this year. I think that would have been nice in the discussions back then, if knowing that we had a huge capital project coming up. You know, is it easier to absorb small increases? Or is it harder to, you know, better to absorb one big one? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Isaac. Next is Dan Carroll, followed by Eric. And Eric, I'm not going to pronounce your last name because I'm going to butcher it. Dan Carroll.
Hello. I live up on Charnleton. Appreciate the chance to be here. I wanted to share some concerns about the reservoir project. To be clear, not a NIMBY, have been very excited about all of the work that's been done, both in other parts of the city and on this project, been very supportive of it. But in the summer, it was discovered that the new water tanks are being installed. It wasn't even originally part of the project, had to go down further down. You all ran into some impervious rock and because of cost issues, you're going to be doing 24 days of dynamite blasting and fracking of rock in our neighborhood. There's about 60 homes among us that are in the 30, 300 foot designated blast zone. EWEB was kind enough to provide pre disaster inspections so that we can know what our homes were before blasting. We, a group of us finally got the the team to write down exactly how the claims process would work. We have two weeks after each blast day to report any claims. It's not what we think is fair, given potential risks that during rainy season and long term changes to the site with stream flow designated in there, but so be it. Wanted to come here with six suggestions, humble suggestions. Number one, as our old homes take on system wide risk, would appreciate better communications with the public. This postcard arrived this week. The only thing it says is this phase of the project will bring new equipment, noises and work methods to the site that you may hear or experience. Think more information is needed, particularly for those outside the blast zone that may not know what's going on. Gas line inspections or gas line is connected to the foundation should be done before the blasting begins. We're waiting three weeks now for someone to come out at our own expense. Provision of seismic monitors were promised. So far, we have not gotten one. We are respectfully asking and have written again, haven't received a response yet about perhaps a two day pause after the blasting begins to make sure that the expert predictions regarding the amount of seismic energy is in fact happening in the way they predicted. And then lastly, I assume this is being done, but fire station crews and Northwest Natural crews on on standby to make sure that anything happens, particularly for homeowners that are not there when something goes down. So again, supportive of the project, but perhaps a little bit slower might be something to consider. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And next is Eric, followed by Mark Rabenowitz.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and good evening to you all. My name is Eric Jura. And I can, I understand why it's difficult to pronounce. You're not the first one.
All right. Thanks.
I am, my family and I are are near the end of a process to construct three single family residences under the Eugene code that deals with middle housing. We're we're taking on that project. And so there was an existing structure on the property and we're building two others. A big part of that was electric and water utility installation. And so what I wanted to say was I wanted to thank you, thank actually the the employees of the EWEB. And you you can do that on my behalf in whatever way you see fit. For the excellent service, the excellent communication. Everybody that I met, all the people that came out to do site visits and all those sorts of things were fantastic. And they were, they communicated very well exactly what was going to happen, and we very much appreciate it. The other thing I'll mention is that we got a free high voltage power pole. A lot of it, what does that mean? That wasn't for me in particular, but what happened was one of the structures, it turned out after it was mostly built, was too close to some of the high voltage power lines. And so there was a little bit of a scramble to figure out how to deal with that, like halt construction or move the pole or something along those lines. And there was some fear that it was going to add cost to the project. Turned out that the pole in question was scheduled for replacement anyway. So they replaced it early and moved it over 10 feet and the problem was solved. So I appreciate the savings. So thank you all for for the great service. Thank you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, last is Mark Rabenowitz.
Okay, good evening. It is not news to anybody here or anybody anywhere that the illusion of federal climate policy is about to evaporate. The Environmental Protection Agency may get broken up, possibly moved out of Washington DC to force employees out, which is of course ironic because super hurricanes and forest fires tend to impact more Republicans than Democrats. How this affects EWEB is a couple ways. We might see another effort to privatize and loot EPA. Congressional delegation's been against this for a long time, and you're going to probably be involved in another effort to prevent the robber barons from taking it over. We could have major economic shocks as incoming President Musk, I think that's his the real president, loots the economy. He's promising a major economic shocks for us all. And that makes your economic predictions irrelevant. How exactly that will unfold is anyone's guess, but something you would need to consider. In 2006, almost 20 years ago, EWEB helped bring Richard Heinberg of Post Carbon Institute to Eugene. One of the best authors on the planet on the topic of limits to growth on a finite planet. And since then, very little's actually been done to implement energy efficiency and scaling back over consumption in Eugene or almost anywhere else. Since 2006, world population has increased by almost a billion and a half. In 1859, when the first oil well was dug in Pennsylvania, we had 1.2 billion. It increases about a quarter million a day, close to the combined population of Eugene and Springfield. These are long term trends that sustainability rhetoric ignores. And finally, for a more specific context, I watched yesterday a documentary by BBC journalist Greg Pallist called Vigilantes Incorporated: America's New Vote Suppression Hitmen. And he did an exploration of how almost a million mostly black voters were kicked off the voting rolls in Georgia to ensure the desired outcome from the governor of Georgia. Similar suppressions of civil rights happened in other other swing states. This is part of the upcoming retreat from environmental policies, a development that will harm future generations of all species. So sort of man be pam be approach to environmentalism and sustainability has been proven to be inadequate and it's time to deepen commitments. Thank you.
Thank you. And comments from commissioners or staff? I'll just say thank you all for taking the time to to be here and share your thoughts. Much appreciated. Anything from staff?
Appreciate.
No, appreciate all all of the input, a number of different bits and pieces. I think we can take as an organization and apply and learn from where appropriately and and definitely appreciate the feedback. So on a on a number of different subjects.
Great. Thank you. All right, we will go on to the next topic then, which will be board action items, starting with consent calendar A.
Consent calendar A?
Second to approve by Schlossberg, second by Borowski. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on that. Support to adopt consent calendar A or approve consent calendar A? Say aye. Aye passes unanimously. Consent calendar B. Calling number seven.
I was just gonna, I'll make a comment after Commissioner Schlossberg.
Okay.
To approve consent calendar B minus item number seven.
All right, second moved by Schlossberg, second by Borowski to approve consent calendar B minus item seven. Any discussion on support say, oh.
Just as a discussion, commissioners, this included an item that had to do with the transformation charges and more equitably allocating capacity within our system. There were a couple of of changes. Really appreciate the feedback we got from the community on this. And so I wanted to acknowledge that just in the comments before you, what looks like are going to approve it. But I don't want to jump, jump the gun. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. So approval of consent calendar B minus item seven. All in support say aye. Aye passes unanimously. Item number seven. Brown?
Thank you. I've talked about this before. It's a quarter million dollar contract and we have criteria set that local owned companies can't bid it. So we have just one bid and and I appreciate your explanation. But it, let me just ask you this. So you say that they they're telling us how much they're recycling. They're telling us how much cardboard and how much food waste and how much glass. Are we checking up on that? But they're telling us what they're doing, correct? But there's no follow up or no accountability on what they're doing.
I'd have to check on that. I don't know the answer.
Okay, I'm just assuming there isn't because that's a criteria that we set a long, long time ago on on the sustainability thing. And I would hope that we're going to revisit this, I think, in March, that we could at least revisit this. So I I like to do business with local companies, all else considered equal. And the fact that the local companies can't bid this because we have some criteria and we're not even checking up on that criteria. We're just taking their word for it. To me, I would hope that we could at least revisit that next March. So these the local companies could have a chance to bid. It's a pretty big contract and not have to send their money out of state and out of country.
It's just just one clarification, Commissioner Brown. The requirement called out the reporting that is in is in board policy. So and so you are correct there. And we have scheduled the March meeting to review board policy. So that that part is accurate. The fact that a local company did not provide a proposal was was their choice. This was a reporting thing. So it wasn't that we were excluding intentionally excluding a local organization. This was they chose not to meet the criteria of which the award, the intended awardee, Santa Pac, has agreed to do the reporting and without charge. So it wasn't, I just wanted to point out, it wasn't that we developed something to exclude somebody. They chose not not to participate.
I understand it. We had three, three companies, two of them, the two local ones said, we can't do this. And the third one did, but I don't think we have a follow up where they just tell us what they're doing and we accept it. Okay, thank you. Maybe we can look at this next March.
What would you like them to do to follow up to to check it? I mean, are they going to go weigh cardboard boxes?
No, but
I'm just curious.
If there's a criteria, if the other people are saying they want to do this, there's we have this rule that says, or this thing that says, you tell us how much recycling they're doing, and they're telling us that. Why are we doing that?
For sustainability reporting purposes and how much we're actually recovering.
We're, but we're taking their word for it.
Well, I mean, there's lots of things that we take our word for. Why this specific one? And and if there is a remedy there, what do we do? I mean, are we going to send staff to check on? I just don't know how we would check up on that. If we're going to change the board policy, then it would be helpful in March to figure out what we're actually asking staff to do differently to check out.
Probably look into this because I would at least like to have a local company have an opportunity and set it's send a quarter million dollars out of state.
So proposal for March when we're looking at?
Just see if there's something, I think they they understand what I'm saying. And it's, you know, it's not going to work right now, but somehow in the future, because all else considered equal, I like to keep, when we have a contract, I don't like to send it out of state or out of country if we can have a local provider do that. And if we've set the criteria to where they don't even want to bid it, maybe we ought to look at what we're doing.
Frank?
Yeah, I think staff understands Commissioner Brown's point. I think what what we have done is we go out through our, in a procurement and as part of that procurement, we abide and adhere to board policy that we've been given. I think it's also fair to for the board to review that policy periodically and decide, you know, this, this is actually a real world example of something that you look at in board policy that then has actual effects. And here's an example of an effect that that was realized through a procurement process. And so I don't think the issue is as much follow up as much as it is the specification and what drove the specification and why did it exclude certain people and include others? And so that's, that's where I think that we all have to be careful with board policy, certainly. But I think this was, this procurement was driven to adhere to board policy. So if if you would want to change that, that that's where the the point of discussion would take place.
Okay, thanks, Borowski.
Thanks. Yeah, I think that what I would hope for when we come back and and look at the board policies is if the letter of the law is 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 excluding somebody that's basically compliant with what we're trying to get to. And so that's what I would hope for is if if the a local, a local holler is doing what we want to do, but just doesn't have the capacity to document that they're doing it. If they can kind of say, yes, we're doing it. Like I said, we take their word for a lot of things, but we, they may not be as large of a corporation to set up the accounting measures to do it. You know, if that's, that's something that I would hope for, you know, it's like, like Frank said, the policies are written and staff is is charged with enforcing the policies that we put forward. If we find that there's a policy that is restrictive to the point that it's excluding people that could do the same job, but not, you know, not check one box. I would like to look into that and see if that box actually needs to be checked for us to meet the sustainability goals that we're trying to get to.
Thanks. Yeah, I I think it whenever we go through board policy, there's, there's value that 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 those policies create and and value both has a cost and a benefit side to it. And we have to understand the requirement that was put in there, why it was put in there. Was that for even a larger than board policy purpose? Was there some? The requirement that was put in there, why it was put in there, was that for even a larger than board policy purpose? Was there some sort of. Statutory or mandatory or customer driven kind of kind of benefit there? So we have to look at both the benefit and the cost side. And and this identifies the cost side. We need to understand the benefit side.
Great. Thank you. Item number seven, motion to through consent calendar B, item seven. Thanks. Move by Schlossberg. For a second, second by Borowski on support of approving consent calendar B, item seven, say I. I, all right, passes unanimously. On to the next item, the city of Eugene liaison update.
Okay, Commissioner Brown and I attended a meeting, was that last week, I think? Yeah, last week. With the leadership of the city of Eugene, it was the mayor and the council president and vice president and the city manager. They were, it was a good give and take. Mostly, they asked us some questions regarding grid reliability. And some of the issues that they've been hearing about electrification, data, data farms. And other things that would influence the reliability of our our grid as it proposes to EWEB. Frank gave a good presentation about that. And so the concerns that we've been hearing around this table. As it has to do with with increased number of of power that's going to be needed for the region. Some of the transmission issues that we 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 see going forward. So we conveyed those to them. Some of the other questions that they had were regarding. Small grid solar, rooftop solar, the mayor was concerned about that to see, you know, where we were on those and how. How we could help move those along. We, there was also a question about. The road Hilliard Street that we dug up when we put in our new main and and the timeline for getting that repaired. And we explained to us that our work is pretty much done. And now we're on on the schedule of the city of Eugene's paving and preservation. Thing which I'm sure will be happening in the next, in the next construction season, as I recall seeing on one of my committees. We brought forward the fact about that we're working through getting the second treatment plant put in in our emergency water stations that we just opened up. They were, they were happy to hear about that. And what else? Anything else? Oh, yeah. We also kind of gave them a little briefing about the issues that we're having at Carmen and dealing with the. Different regulatory bodies that are kind of. Going up against each other that we had a presentation on last year, last month. So it was a good give and take. The the mayor was very engaged. Both counselors were engaged and seemed to really appreciate the meeting. And I think going forward, the the. The new leadership that will be coming in next year, I think will, it'll be again, time to. Bring them up to speed on the the relationships that we have between between the two. Agencies. Yeah, but other than that, it went real well.
I would just add that I think both the the city acknowledged and that we've acknowledged that. Staff between, you know, the the collaboration between EWEB staff and city staff is is really high. I think there's, we're working on a lot of things together. There's good communications. There's certainly challenges, but also opportunities in that. And and city staff and EWEB staff are working well together, which is a credit to EWEB and and the city of Eugene. So that was reiterated. I would mention the solar comments were specific around downtown solar. There's, there's some, some challenges to that. Over the long term, a lot of the solar challenge in the city of Eugene has to do with the return on investment. And the value of the energy and the capacity or lack of capacity that creates. And and so that is, that is not an unusual. Situation for a Westside utility at this point, at least. Unless the economics change. So that was a little more specific on the solar question.
Great. Thanks. Other updates or questions from other commissioners? All right, so we move on to the next topic. Upcoming year proposed budgets and prices.
Good evening, President McCray and commissioners. For the record, my name is Deborah Hart. I'm one of the assistant general managers and the CFO. With me this evening are Adam Root, the rates manager. Aaron Ballmer, the interim finance manager, and Alicia Voorhees, the interim budget supervisor. Also here in the audience are Janice Lee and Danielle Davidson. Who are all a part of the team that along with leadership from across the utility put together. What we're here to share this evening. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Aaron Ballmer.
Thank you, Deborah. So on the screen is an overview of the stages in the financial plan and calendar. We are very much in the midst of the process and I hope this slide is becoming a little familiar. Last month, we reviewed the updated long term financial plans and sought board direction on the 2025 draft budgets. This month, we are here with a detailed draft budget document. Along with refined price proposals for 2025 that include impacts to each of the customer classes. Following direction this evening, we will incorporate any board feedback and return next month, seeking board action on 2025 budgets and price proposals. There are opportunities for public hearings at several points along the way, one of which is on the agenda for this evening following the presentation. With that, I will pass to Alicia to talk us through budgets.
Thank you, Aaron. Good evening, commissioners. Excuse me. The grid on this slide is representative of the four buckets for budget authority. Board policy establishes that each utility shall have an operations and maintenance budget and a capital budget. Each budget is the maximum level of expenditure authorized by the board. The figures here correspond to the line item totals found in attachment one of the proposed 2025 budget document included in your board packet. There are no substantial changes from drafts presented last month and the primary assumptions for the budgets remain the same. I will note that we will have. Updated 2024 reserves and as a result of a result of updated year and forecast. And for next month, staff anticipate requesting budget amendments for the current year budget. The next two slides provide a little more detail on each utilities budgets and the initiatives and priorities they support. The water utility operations and maintenance budget totals approximately 35 million. This figure is 3 million higher as compared to the 2024 budget. Due to the need to support new technology, services and infrastructure. The budget supports initiatives and source protection as well as continued watershed recovery efforts following the Holiday Farm fire. It reflects ongoing services to provide clean, healthy water through operations at Haven Bridge. And regular maintenance on the distribution system. It also supports EWEB's commitment to affordability through bill assistance programs such as customer care. The water utility capital budget totals approximately 48 million and is approximately 9 million higher as compared to 2024 budget. In order to provide for construction on College Hill reservoirs as well as detailed design work for the Willamette Treatment Plant. This budget supports ongoing investments to update metering technology to improve service. As well as efforts to upgrade our legacy IT systems with EWEB enterprise solutions. It also provides for the continued construction on the Berlston Expansion Project, which will provide a flexible, adaptable space. For current and future storage and operational needs. Next slide. The electric operations and maintenance budget totals approximately 308 million. This figure is approximately 6 million lower as compared to 2024 budget. Due to an offsetting impact of increased support for new technology, services and infrastructure. More than offset by lower wholesale purchase power as a result of lower market prices. I will note that along with the reduction in market purchases, there's an offsetting reduction in wholesale sales revenue as well. The operations and maintenance budget supports near term risk reduction work on the Leeburg project. As well as SAM safety work on EWEB's Mackenzie River hydroelectric assets. It furthers vegetation management work. Electrification, energy efficiency and greenhouse gas production programs. As well as supports bill assistance programs such as customer care. The electric utility capital budget totals approximately 98 million and is 12 million higher as compared to 2024 budget. Increased debt service following this year's bond issuance, as well as capital investments needed to meet near term regulatory requirements and risk mitigation work contributed to this increase. The electric capital budget for 2025 supports needed investments to upgrade the Carmen Smith hydroelectric project. And continue substation renewal and replacement work to improve reliability. The budget supports land improvements necessary for future storm water conveyance along. It provides for ongoing investments to upgrade meter technology in the Mackenzie River Valley's territory to improve service. As well as efforts to upgrade our legacy IT systems. And finally, the capital budget supports the Berlston Expansion Project as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Adam Root.
And so the next part of the presentation is taking us overall revenue requirement increases for. Showing the allocation to each respective customer class and then for the bills for the customers within each class. So this does the overall water increase was eight percent. The electric increase was. Seven percent that applied to both the basic and the volumetric charges for both utilities. A notable change for the water utility was moving towards the industry standard, an AWW standard of meter weighting. So it disproportionately affected the higher the larger meter customers. You'll see that in the bill impacts. Additional impact for the water utility was an increase in the pumping charges as we find that costs. For the. Electric utility, we applied a. To align more closely with the cost of service analysis, we increased the basic charge for residential, for example, $5. And the cost of service was showing by the third year at $40 basic charge. So we increased it $5 to moving primarily towards that. A notable change to look for. Additionally, in the background, we discussed the update to market based rates. So we should mention that. The lower wholesale markets on the overall budget for this for customers with distributed generation that impacts. You can see on on this slide, the impact of the cost of service results. And so the residential went slightly below the overall average and the general service and wholesale contracts for. Tend to be a bit above the overall average. One comment on the elevation charges, the elevation charge is a component of the bill. So customers. That are served at elevation pay the EWEB bill as well as an elevation charge to serve at elevation. So the increase here is just for that elevation component of the bill. So an average. Customer at the respective elevation level. So at the first elevation level, their increase. For seven K gals was eight percent and nine percent at the seventh elevation. So they weren't seeing a 22% increase in that portion of the bills. So here's the impact of the. Weighting towards the larger meters. This was a similar thing that came up in the system development charges. At both of the larger meters. See the majority of our residential customers. This will show up on the commercial class as well, but for the residential customers, most of them are in the less than one inch meter category over nine percent. But the few customers that are the larger meters, we'll see a percentage increase in average. Oh, thanks. And next slide shows. It goes for those debts. Those customers that are less than one inch meter, which is the majority of the customers, just the bill impacted different usage levels. And you can see the lower usage levels have lower increases and. Due to the tiered rates and the water utility, the larger usage customers were showing larger increases. The average bill of seven K gals that that outdoor irrigation does lead some customers to higher usage levels. So. And some reach in the teens and early twenties. With the next slide. Is there's a lot of numbers on here, but just to see the general trend, it's the higher basic charge impacting the. And and you can see the effect of the larger, the higher increase on the larger meter customers here. So this is the majority of our customers are less than one inch, one inch. The background or had the full range of all the different meters customers. Have to present on the slide or just the majority of the customers. That moved the electric slide. Here, similar to the water utility, we generally aligned with the cost of service results for the overall average increase by class. The one exception is the street lighting customers. We updated the consumption of the street lighting as there's been significant change in LED. Implementation for street lights and city. Since the last time that was updated. With that, we showed a decrease in the first year, but was increasing in the second and third year of the cost of service. And so we just held that flat for the first year to avoid that shock going down and then. Next slide is showing the residential bill impacts. Here you can see. The impact of the increase of $5 on the basic charge going from 25 to $30. There's also an increase in volume metric rate, but notable change here is that $5 increase in the basic charge. And so for a customer with no consumption, they can. House, which will be seeing the full $5 increase. Or 20%, which is a high large, larger percentage. And as the usage goes up, that percentage increase declines, but they're still seeing a higher dollar increase. Residential change. For the general service, this is another one with a lot of information on it, but for these commercial classes, the impact of the. Higher usage is reflected in both the vertical axis showing that higher kilowatt hours and then across the line. With higher demand usage. And so that's showing the impact disproportionately towards the or similar of the residential customers higher proportion to the basic charge. And decreases a bit with the higher. And finally, this is just the summary of the bill comparison and affordability metrics that we track and to the board. And the chart on the left shows the median household income relative to EWEB bills. We. Track this over time and tend to compare relative to the 6% threshold that is used defined by the state as. Energy burden. So the intent of our bill assistance programs is to move customers from burden to not burdened under that metric. And the chart on the right is showing the. EWEB's current rates and one more that will show with the proposed increases. EUW's current rates and one more that will show with the proposed increases. And this shows where EUW is relative to comparators and all these comparators are shown at their current rates. And acknowledging that all of our local comparators are seeing upward rate pressure, particularly on the electric side, the bond anticipated bond increases. Even with these increases were within the low end of maintaining our positions at the low end of the water utility and in the middle of the pack, same position of proposed increase for the electric utility.
Great. Did you have something?
Just back to you, President McCray, for a public hearing and then we'll just sit tight and after that questions.
Perfect. All right, moving on to a public hearing on the upcoming year proposed budgets and prices. I'll just ask, is there anybody here to provide testimony? Okay, so do you know how many somebody signed up? I'm not going to go through the opening and closing it. We're just going to go right back to you for, if that's okay with everybody. Do I need to open and close? Okay, public hearing, opening, public hearing, seeing nobody, closing the public hearing. All right, back to you.
Thank you. So really, it's to you to we're here to entertain questions, answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. Don?
Thank you. Great presentation. I always get questions about the water districts, so give me just an example of why Willamette Water went up seven percent and like River Road or Oakway or whatever the other private water districts went up fourteen percent. Why would there be such a differential?
Yeah, the this is similar, holds true with the street lighting as well, but for some of the smaller customer class that we yeah, for some of the smaller classes, particularly Willamette Water Company, smaller changes can impact them differently, they were closer in line to the overall increase, but a bit above this year's cost of service analysis. It's kind of having to get into weeds a little bit, so I'll try to keep it a little bit out of the weeds, but there was, we refined several of our assumptions on the cost of service analysis, particularly the elevation charge is the most notable one. And for, in that review of the elevation charges, the portion coming from from Hayden Bridge was going to EUW retail customers and not to the wholesale customers, so there was upward pressure in excess of the for the wholesale water districts and Willamette because they were we reviewed the allocation of the pumping charges that were coming out of Hayden Bridge and spread that disproportionately over all of our customers that included them, so that was upward pressure, their rates are still below that of the over, of the EUW customers because they're served at that wholesale rate, so they're not getting all of the the same costs as EUW customers for meter reading, for example, they're getting a lower performance since they're sold at wholesale versus retail, so their rates are generally lower than EUW customers since they're sold at wholesale, but those things that were pushing pressure, putting increased pressure on them were the things that went up this year.
So we don't pump Willamette Waters all the way down to Goshen and Crestmore? That's not our pump, that's theirs?
No, that's, that's, that's the charges that are going up.
So we just pump to, we treat their water right and we just pump it to their line? And or do we, do they take water out of our, our main line? I'm just curious about the logistics, because I get the question about this, about why why if somebody gets seven percent and the other one gets fourteen?
Yeah, I think, I understand, I think Willamette has served that elevation. And we'll have to check there.
Yeah, you can get back to me on that. Thank you.
Frank? Just in a, in a simple way, Commissioner Brown is both the water districts and wholesale water are driven by contracts. And so while we have a lot of rate design philosophies that we put into our own rates that we charge, not all the elements are included in all of the contracts, so that's why you see differences between them.
Oh, and that's a good point to clarify that, that the fact that they're charged a lower amount in this cost of service, there are other charges that they are directly billed that are outside of the cost of service rate thing, so their overall customers are paying a similar amount, it's just not a hundred percent of it's out of the cost of service. Some of those, some of those are other items in that wholesale contracts.
Thank you. Great, other questions? Vravsky?
Thank you. So going over the budget, it I have a few questions and one that, you know, when I see a, a capital expenditure that for the Leberg stormwater in our, in our capital. This kind of goes to another discussion is, okay, we're putting capital into Leberg stormwater, when we made the decision on decommissioning Leberg, we, we said we were going to go with stormwater conveyance, but we also said that we were going to look to see if there was options to go directly back to the river, and I'm just wondering, at what point are we putting enough capital in that, that we are past the point of no return on that? And that's not an answer that I need today, but that's one, when we, next time we talk about Leberg and that, that would be something that would be nice to know.
Do you want to give Frank a moment to field that?
Yeah, I won't field all of it, I will just differentiate between the stormwater conveyance at Leberg that is a dam safety regulated requirement that we have versus the long-term, how much of the stormwater conveyance are we going to use? We, we figure we're going to have to use some of it, and so we'll look for opportunities to leverage those. But they're driven by, in the near-term, different requirements.
And that's what, and I understand that, but I just, at some point, it's going to be, okay, we're going, we're we're committed to this direction and, and I just wanted to, you know, that's not the budget question, but when I see capital going to Leberg in that slide, it just made me think about that. We did get a memo, one of the concerns that I had or that are a flare that went up was the cost of, of wages. Wages and benefits that have increased since twenty twenty-three actuals to twenty twenty-five proposed. It's a twenty-two million dollar increase, which is a nineteen percent increase in, in wages and benefits. And the, the memo was clear, you know, that we've added more people and we're, we're doing more work and costs go up, but I'm just wondering, is this a trend line that is going to continue at that type of, of increases? Because for me, if we keep expanding the organization, that, you know, what was represented was that twenty-five percent of our budget is, is wages and benefits, so to me, as a, as a layman accountant, twenty-five percent of our increases are tied to wages and benefits of our employees, it might, it's probably less, but a twenty-two million dollar increase over two years, a year and a half, two years, is, is something that I would put a flare up to and, and hope that that's not a continuing trend line that we're going towards. I know we need to have people in the job, I know that we need to pay people competitive prices, I know that insurance rates and everything go up, but it's just a, it's a red herring that I see up there. And then the last thing that, that again will that I, I noticed in the budget and in the slides that we have in front of us is the disproportional impact that the, the raise in the basic charge, how that disproportionately affects the lower-income people. You know, five dollars to somebody who's got a hundred-dollar bill is five percent, five dollars to somebody who's got a thousand-dollar bill is half a percent. And so that's something that I think when we start looking at rate design, that's one of the, one of the things that I, you know, that I pull out of a budget that will go into my, my thought process when we're going into these other ones, but you know, you looked at the, at the percentage increase, you know, okay, well, this person's paying twenty-five dollars and now they're paying thirty dollars, but the person who's paying two hundred and fifty dollars is paying two hundred and fifty-five dollars, and so I'm not saying that I, I have a problem with this budget or the, the proposals moving forward. It's just something that comes up to me when we start thinking about the questions that we want to ask ourselves when we're going on to the rate design type of thing, so thank you.
Great, thanks.
You can comment if you'd like or not.
Yeah. My boss raised his hand, so.
Well, I was certainly going to comment on a couple of things, so there's been a number of different pressures that we've seen on both water and electric in the last few years that have driven up both the content of labor and wages and also the percent, although it's still not like a university or a school district where you have ninety percent or even the city of Eugene where you have a very high labor content. There will be some of that that continues, the part that we will continue to see upward pressure on is, is probably the wages themselves. We do live in an environment and we have the type of labor force that we have, there's a certain degree of of scarcity and speciality to that. We see that in our union contract negotiations, for example, these are, are skilled people who are part of a union and are represented, and we see that cost pressures kind of across the board in engineering fields and technical fields and IT fields, so that part will likely increase. But we have seen a more dramatic just quantity impact the last few years, which I would say is probably abnormal, is in the area that increasing regulations, increasing administration of projects, and also just the level of capital increase that we're, that we're doing at this point, there's a there's a, a bubble of capital work that we have planned for and staffed for, so those, those are sort of separate issues, but they're one will, I think, continue, maybe dampen a little bit as we, as society gets a little better grip around inflation, potentially, the other, maybe not. The other thing I was going to mention was relative to rate design. I do think it's a fair topic, although I would point out that, that consumption levels and income levels are not related, so in other words, low consumption does not equal low income. And so that's data that we have to take into account when we look at the impact of a basic charge. If you get to the point where you are consuming greater than about, I want to say Adam would know this off the top of his head, but somewhere around the thirteen hundred, twelve fifty to thirteen hundred kilowatt hours a month, what's, which would be an average, above that, you're not covering your fixed cost. And commissioners did say they want better alignment between cost and price, and so when you have a huge fixed cost, the, the delivery of the very first electron or the very first gallon of water is the most expensive, so we'll have to look at that in rate design, we'll also have to look at that when we think about our customer care programs. And now Deborah wants to correct me on everything I just said.
All right, just to add and, and recognizing your concern on cost control. We have the actuals for 2023, we tend to be conservative in our forecasting of vacancies, and so those aren't quite apples to apples. But yes, they certainly did rise. They dropped by ten in our forecast next year, a total FTE, and then it flattens out. So, so that doesn't speak to inflation, but it does speak to our staffing levels. And then I did want to call out that our average usage as well as our, at the ten fifty and the sixteen hundred, which we typically view as our single-family all-electric. Those are right at our average increase. And our customer care data actually tells us that our limited income folks are spread across the range of consumption in almost the exact same rate that the rest of our population is.
Great, thank you for that clarification, and yeah, I understand, it's just like I said, on the, when you see a nineteen percent increase, it's worth at least giving voice to it.
Yeah, and I had the same concern, that's why we raised the question, the pre-meeting questions about the, the wages, so I appreciate the extra context there. Another piece that I wondered about is, so we had, we had a contract that we passed recently and know if a part of that was folded into, you know, these larger increases, so I asked the open-ended question because I didn't want to make any assumptions, but that, that was another part of what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, yes, it was, just answered directly, and also we did, and I believe, Rod, it was a year and a half ago, we, as part of that, we did a full market assessment for both the union and the non-union groups, and that was part of, part of that escalation as well.
Okay, and, and are there additional escalations built in then in further years? Because it's a multi-year contract.
Yeah, there's, there's a mid-year check-in where we will do another market assessment, is my understanding, I'm not the exact expert on this, and I'm going to look at maybe some others to do this. There's a cost of living every other year, and then there's a midterm check-in in, in this four-year contract, and so I think, I don't know exactly what the escalation is, but is that about right?
That sounds about right, I'd have to look it up myself.
So yes, there's some escalation built in. One is based on a reassessment, just a market, when we say market comparator a utility check-in, and then the other one would be based on a, on a CPI.
Okay, and then the other, you know, underlying question here is obviously, there's a lot of it that's market-based, it's also inflationary-based. I don't deny that those situations exist out there, but again, I want to stress, and I know I've stressed in the past, what are we doing to help build people up so that we have a pool of people here locally that can actually take these jobs? If there are things that we can do, programs that we can support and partner with to ensure that we have groups of people that would come in to help support that, I think that that would really be beneficial to our community locally. Thank you.
Thanks. Other comments? Take just a moment, again, thank you as always for distilling complex financial information to a way that I can understand it. Your reports and presentations are consistently clear, and so I very much appreciate that. Can we go back to the slide that was showing the different percentage increase in electric rates by demand? Yeah, so the question I have here, and this may be obvious, but is the difference in percentage in the right column, that is that all driven by the fact the five-dollar fixed fee gets kind of diluted as we go down the rate, the different categories that we're seeing?
Well, the five-dollar increase wasn't the extent of the increase, there wasn't a change in the volumetric rate as well.
Okay.
And so there is both, both impacts, so you can see like as we go down to the, the ten fifty, which is our like average usage and the median household's income chart, the increase for those customers is ten dollars or seven percent, it's just that five dollars is a higher percentage increase than the volumetric rate.
Right, there was, my question was, were we changing, did we have a different increase in volumetric rate for different categories, but we don't, it's just that that fixed fee gets diluted.
Spread over more.
Thank you, okay, that's my clarified question. That's all I had, thank you. So you wanted feedback from us, do you want, I saw there were some specific recommended things that you would like to see from us, you want specific direction at this point?
Taking the direction here this evening to prepare materials to bring back to you in what feels like only a week with this board meeting. The feedback I was hearing is that you want us to, that it's important that we continue to contain costs. I believe keeping an eye on labor and total costs in general, and that there are some follow-up questions on Leberg that really probably relate more to getting some input from engineering on that.
Sounds good, yeah, and I'm not seeing anybody suggesting to, that we develop a budget using different assumptions that are set in here, right, it feels like that there's consensus, I'll agree. Go in the right direction, please, Vravsky.
The only question that I have is then, we talked about seven percent on electric. There's been another four percent when, when BPA comes in, so will that be a supplemental budget that will come at, at us in, when we see that process or when, when and where will we vote on that? Will that be in this vote that we're going to do in December?
So the budget associated with BPA So the budget associated with BPA is, is all in there. So when, so approving this budget means approving all of what we have forecasted for expenditures for the remainder of the year. We just will not begin to collect, and we will only collect the actual pass-through from BPA, which you all have given us a policy provision to be able to pass that through.
Okay, so it won't be a separate, separate action item? Okay, thank you.
Frank?
I would put a caveat on that, Commissioner Barofsky. The only caveat to that would be if we get something incredibly unexpected from Bonneville, either much higher or much lower, we think we have a good enough relationship. This, Bonneville has a long process in this. But if there was something that was sort of out of left field, we may have to come back to the board and talk through that. And if there were things that we needed to amend, we would work with the board on that.
Great, thank you. All right. If there's nothing else from us, from you, looks like we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to propose we just take the break as it's scheduled here right now, between now and the next topic. So we'll break for ten minutes. This, there it is. Thank you. Calling back to order, the November twelfth meeting of the Eugene Water and Electric Board. And we are on item fourteen, the EES Go Live update. Travis?
Good evening, commissioners. So for the record, Travis Kinnate, Chief Information Officer. I'm joined by Julen McGahey, Chief Customer Officer. And yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about our Go Live. We promised that we were going to be back last month, and we didn't. Not because we didn't want to, but there was kind of a packed agenda, and we did a correspondence. But we are two weeks from tomorrow that, when we start our Go Live activities. So we thought pretty apt time to come in and chat with you about what's going on. I apologize right now. I do not like slides with animations, but I couldn't figure out a better way to do this. So we're going to have animations today.
All right, I'm going to start us off. So we are eighteen months into season one, and just can't stress enough how hard our project teams have been working. We hear from people outside of EWeb, our contractors, our partners, how unusual it is to have a project of this size and scope have zero turnover. And I feel like I'm going to jinx it, but we're two weeks to go, and we have zero turnover. So just huge shout out and thank you for the team dedication. We're so appreciative of everything that they've done for the project. So training began in mid-October. It's classroom-style training. It's still underway, and we are going to go all the way through the week of Go Live with training. It's going really well. We are checking in with managers and supervisors next week for their team's readiness, and we'll still have a little bit of time to make some adjustments, but we're feeling good about it. And last month, we started adjusting our change management messaging from awareness. We're getting a new system. We're moving to operational readiness. So this is how we're going to operate in the system, and this is how we're going to support people in the system.
So we've gone through one dress rehearsal. And so a dress rehearsal is practice for Go Live, where we literally time it. We start at, like, for example, we are doing a dress rehearsal that starts tonight at midnight, and the teams will work through the evening just like they would at Go Live to make sure that it's a tried and true process, and we know how to handle situations when they come up and make sure that all of the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So we did one dress rehearsal in October, and we had really good results from it. Second dress rehearsal, like I said, is starting tonight at midnight. We'll go through the next three to four days where we'll have checkpoints throughout the process and go-no-go decisions and really just practicing it. So when it comes time for that Go Live, it's really a nothing burger, and everybody is well-versed in what's happening. So lots of work there. I do want to talk a little bit about risks. So we've talked about risks, you know, as I presented and as we've presented in the past. Just one of the risks that we just wanted to call out is this institutional knowledge. So, and it'll lead towards another bullet coming up. But we have to remember, we have twenty-five and thirty years of knowing how we do things in the system, knowing how to support the system, knowing when the system goes down, oh, that's because of this. It happened at six o'clock in the morning every time on the first of February for the last ten years or whatever, right? So we do have a lot of institutional knowledge. And as of Go Live, we're obviously going to have zero minutes of institutional knowledge with this system, which is just going to drive challenges and support challenges. And Julie's going to talk about that in a little bit. The other thing that we know is a risk is you can't spend eighteen months developing a system, no matter how much out of the box you want it to be, without potential for defects and bugs that go live. And so we are preparing for that. That's part of the, the dress rehearsals that we practice that and look at those bugs. But we do know that there is going to be things that we're going to have to adjust to and adapt to as we go live. And so we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to do that within the system, but then also how we're prepping for that.
So we started last month with some really targeted, specific customer communications. And this was really just to smaller groups whose programs they were enrolled in were impacted by some changes with the EES. So started small. This month, we're working broader. So in addition to social media messaging and website messaging, most customers should receive about five touchpoints of communication about the rollout. So there is going to be an email. There's a postcard. There's a bill insert. We're doing on-bill messaging. And there is the current connections newsletter. So what we're saying in those is that we have a new customer information and billing system. We also have upgraded our portal. We're going to be taking down the portal for a couple of days at the end of November. When we bring it back up, it's going to look a little bit different. We do have some enhanced security, so we're going to ask you to change your password. And there's also going to be multi-factor authentication, very high-level, broad messaging, just awareness out there that when you see your portal, it's going to look a little bit different, and it's still ours. So we will continue communications through December. After Go Live, we'll be sharing with customers their new account number. We will have proactive communications. If we do discover any bugs in the rollout that Travis was mentioning, we'll be very proactive about that and what customers need to do, if anything. And most likely, we will be addressing some longer hold times for customer service. So some of you were here when we rolled out the portal, and we had very long hold times. And so this time around, we're trying to learn from that, and we're doing a few things differently. Through a lot of hard work from the project teams, we are not requiring customers to re-register or reset up their wallets. That's something that caused a lot of, a lot of confusion and a lot of calls for customers. We've stepped, we've stepped up quite a few CSAs, which will be helpful. And we also have a dedicated team to provide next-level support for customers who need a little bit of extra help in the portal. And with all of that, we are still expecting longer hold times. And it's what Travis talked to you about, the institutional knowledge. Every single task a CSA is going to do now when they answer the phone, it's going to be a new procedure in a new system, and it is just going to take longer. So we're doing lots of expectation setting. We're expectation setting with staff. You need to be patient with yourself. You know the basics, but it's going to take a little while longer to do what you normally fly through. We're setting customers' expectations, so we'll do some communications if, if and when those call times go up. We'll let people know better times to call. We have overtime we can use to do callbacks after hours. We have a number of different strategies we can employ to kind of reduce that impact. And we're here tonight setting your expectations. You may hear about, from customers, the hold times are longer, the portal looks different, and we want you to feel good about asking customers for a little bit of patience. You all have my contact information. You can send them to me. We'll get people callbacks. But we are expecting hold times, and we don't want to, we don't want to pretend we won't. And it's really normal for a transition of this size, and we're employing all the strategies that we have to try to mitigate them.
So Go Live, December second. As I mentioned, or as we mentioned in our presentation a couple of months ago, the work starts ahead of time. So two weeks from tomorrow, or yeah, two weeks from tomorrow, the teams will start doing the cutover, and it'll bleed all the way through the Thanksgiving Day weekend. There will be on Friday afternoon or evening, a point of no return where everything's gone well, everything's planned to go well the rest of the weekend. And we're going to flip that switch and make that decision, and then there's no go-bangs at that point. And so we'll make sure that we're communicating those things with the executive team and Frank and you all. And so you'll kind of know where we're at and when we hit that, that positive step. The other thing here is I have ICS and Hypercare Command Center. So the project has a Hypercare Command Center that they're going to be going through. We're also going to stand up a soft ICS at that time. So we have dedicated folks being that liaison and that, that leadership between what else is happening at the utility and the project. So as an example, Frank mentioned earlier, we're in soft ICS today because of the potential windstorm. That would be something that our ICS commander would be coordinating with Tyler and his group and making sure that everything is still okay to move forward with, and we don't have something that would, would stop us from moving our Go Live. And from the Hypercare Command Center perspective, as Julie said, people are going to be doing work that they've never done in this system before other than in training, but never in production. So we have, there's things happening like floor walkers. So we'll have somebody walking around the floor up with the CSAs, and they can raise their hand and say they need help while they're on phone with a customer. And we will have somebody there that can help them. And if there's a bug or something that comes up that's beyond that support, that's what the command center is. And so this room will act as the command center. We'll have people from the project, the leads, our developers, the consultants will be here. And we'll use this as a command center to solve any of the problems that come up and help with decision-making. The last bullet I'm going to share is a little bit about future and what happens kind of post-Go Live. And we've talked a little bit about this in our previous presentations. And normally, these things, because it's going to be some board action, we would do on consent item. But we've been talking a lot about this project. It's a big project, and so we just wanted to be very transparent and talk to you guys, or talk you through these two things. So beyond Go Live, we do have some action that we're going to ask for today, and we'll talk about that next. So the first one is Advent Consulting. So back in this box on the left is just a rinse and reuse of a previous slide that I shared. We got approval from the board in 2023 to sign a contract with Advent Consulting for five million over five years. All of that was in the budget. Everything that I'm going to talk about today, too, I'm going to back up a slide. I don't want you thinking about this. I forgot to mention this. Everything we're talking about today is all in the budget. It's all in the long-term financial plan. It's in the budget for 2025, 26, and beyond. It's all part of the EES planning. So really, the action we're looking for is just the mechanism for signing the contracts. So now I'll start over. So Advent, Advent Consulting, we signed that contract with them in 2023. They provided services like a program director, project manager, QA, business analyst. We want to expand that. And so what you see in the middle here is what we shared in August, as well as that we're going to do stabilization and continuous improvement, and then prepping for future seasons in 2025 as opposed to jumping into an implementation. That's still going to take a lot of work. It's going to take direction. It's going to take developers. And so Advent has been such a solid partner with us. They've been so strong and really instrumental in helping us move this far into the project and helping with the success of it, that we'd like to continue that relationship with them. And so we'd like to increase that spend to ten million over the five years from the existing five. And again, all in the budget, all planned for. The other one is SCW. And so again, back to, looking back at the history here, in 2021, in our presentation, we talked about why a product like SAP. And if you just focus in on this green bar right below, it says that an ERP, an Enterprise Resource Planning System, is defined as the ability to deliver on, deliver an integrated suite of business applications. And so that's what we've done with SAP and what we'll continue to build on. And so that's why in the center here, you see SAP as the foundation, is what we're trying to depict here. And then we've built some of the portal modules and program management and notifications and enterprise portal, which is for our commercial customers or larger customers. We want to continue to build on that in 2025. And SCW is the developer of the product. It's purchased off the SAP price list. And it's, this, you know, all built to, to really be that suite of integrated products, and it's just one of those pieces. And so we've decided that in 2025, as we look at the enhancements and that continuous improvement, we really want to focus our time, a lot of our energy and time on customer-facing capabilities. So we want to add to the portal and add that digital connection with the, with our customers and focus on that customer experience. And SCW is the mechanism to make that happen. And so, again, all ready in the budget. We're a little bit ahead of schedule. We thought we'd be doing some RFPs potentially, and we don't need to. And so really just looking for that approval to, to sign this contract with SCW to help us do that development in the future years. And so to summarize, definitely want to open up for questions as well. But the two actions that we're asking for is with one, Advent to increase that threshold, and then approval with the SCW contract. That is it.
All right.
So President McCray will hand it back to you.
Great, thank you. Questions, Sonia? Want to start?
Yeah, I do have a few questions. Well, one, thank you. I'm really excited that this is going to go forward. It's been something I've talked about the entire time I've been on the board. So it's exciting that's. Just a couple of quick questions about communication to customers. So there were five hundred touchpoints with customers. Do you have the, like, any of the data on the open rates of those emails that went out? I just opened the current connections, which, you know, I always appreciate, I think it's beautiful. But I had to swipe eight times on my phone to get down to the place where it actually talks about this, because it's not at the top. The title of the, you know, the email is EWeb's Current Connections Newsletter, which I got to tell you, I mean, I know you haven't heard, so I read them. But a lot of people are like, okay, newsletter, that's nice. So do you have any sense of, like, how many people are actually opening them and might actually know about the thing? Because I have a concern that, that people don't know at all, and it's going to be a surprise. Yeah.
I would say broadly, it's why we're employing at least five, right? So we have social media, we have our website, and then we have five different methods of communication. Because there were, most people are, you know, have their favorite method, if at all, right, that they, that they use. So if we can get to them through one method, that's going to be a win. I don't have the open rates. I don't actually know that the email has gone out yet. And so we can definitely check back on that.
Okay, so there are more, there are more emails that are sending out. And will they be one that it's like only on this, so there's not fifteen other important things that are?
I think the current connections newsletter and probably the bill insert are only, the only two that have multiple topics on them. The rest of them will be very focused just on, on this, changes coming to the customer portal.
And so if you're signed up to get electronic billing, you only get that kind of standard valued EWeb customer. Is there any way to put a message on that to people who get their bills electronically that will not get the insert? I don't personally get it. I mean, I think a lot of people don't actually get a physical copy in the mail. But I definitely opened this one up because it's got my, my bill number on it.
I believe the bill insert on those is at the bottom of the, when you get the, your bill is ready. You might have to go to your bill, and then you scroll, and the attachments are.
There's not attachment on the most recent one. Anyway, that was on November fourth.
I'm voting in friend, but Jen in the back.
Yeah, Julie's correct. To get the, if you're on e-billing, in order to see the bill insert, you do have to click into the bill, and it's a PDF. You will, and then the PDF is there with the bill insert. And I would just reiterate, we will be able to give you data on open rates and click rates for the email specific about the portal Go Live. And in addition, if customers miss the bill insert, the emails, the social media, the postcards that are being mailed to their house, and they, they just miss all of that, and then they log into the portal after Go Live, and they're like, whoa, what's going on? This looks different. We'll have ready messaging, like point-of-service messaging available to them that says, yes, this is the EWeb portal. It does look different. Click here to learn more.
To Mark, can we get our bill history? Will we have any bill history for a certain amount of time? Or do people need to download it if they want it out of the portal now?
There will be bill history, yeah. How far? And I do not know how far the PDFs are going back, but.
So you would have a year plus one.
Well, we're getting thirteen months of billing history into the new system, but I don't know what PDFs are going to be available. what PDFs are going to be available. It might be more than that.
We can check though. That's yeah.
So if people want that, they might that might be something to think about. And then this is, this is a point of, you know, risk. When you switch systems, now we're opening ourselves up for security, you know, challenge, because people are you know, they they like to jump on those things. So what are the kinds of things we're doing to the extent that you can share? Just let me know that you're you've thought about it, there are plans in place, the messaging actually shows people what it should look like. What kind of security measures do customers know that, hey, when I when I log into this and it looks different than I expect, I know I'm still logging into the E web website, not some other random thing that was emailed to me.
I would say that for one, it it's not going to look dramatically different. I mean, we're still using all of our branding. The buttons are going to look similar. I mean, from a look and feel, Jen, correct me where I'm wrong, too, but from a look and feel, it's certainly going to be an upgraded experience, but it's not like a departure from something massive. And we're requiring people to, like Julie said earlier, change their password. And we're doing multi factor authentication now, which means you got to know something about you to to move forward. And so typically, and I don't know how they're doing the security specifically on this, but typically would require them to receive an email with what email address that we have about. So we're going to send something to your email address that only you could use to then register. And then I can tell you the base system itself, that we have spent a tremendous amount of time working on security with with separation of duties to encryption and E P N tunnels. I mean, we can nerd out all you want to film.
Okay, all right. Well, um, thank you for that. And then the the contract. So there's an interest in increasing the contract. I I didn't see that necessarily in the said information only. So is this something we're actually approve now? Or is this something that's back for? We're just doing direction now?
No, this I would like, we're looking for action today that that and like I said, we could have done consent item, but we just wanted to talk to you all about it and be able to answer any questions that you had. So that's one.
Yeah, I'm curious about what exactly we're getting for the five. You alerted to some of the kind of enhanced customer and I'm curious if we, you know, I mean, obviously, we're working with this company. So and it's been going really well and ahead of schedule. And so there's benefits there. And I'm assuming that it makes we can do that under contracting laws on that.
Yes. Yep. So specifically, we're getting developers, we're getting business analysts that understand the S A P landscape while we're learning it. And these are things that will then go down as as our teams start becoming more proficient in the system and we have that expertise. It's
So it's training of staff to
I wouldn't call it training per se. I would say so the two separate contracts. So if we look at Advent first, one, we continue to lean into them for project managers, business analysts, business process exception management. So and then developers. And so as we look at as I use, if I use it as an example, the fees that we talked about with the city of Eugene, if we go to implement those things and there's custom development that needs to happen in that, our teams don't know how to do that custom development right now. And so we need to lean into consulting company to help us with that. And actually, way back in the time machine, that was one of the benefits of of purchasing a product like S A P was we could lean into consultants. So staff could run the day to day business. And as we come up with projects and efforts, we could lean into consultants to help us with some of this work. We just know we have a massive amount of work in twenty twenty five that we're going to have to to work through.
Yeah, I think really valid comments, Commissioner Carlson. I would describe the contract piece of this as something where we started with the basics with these two organizations. We were in season one. We wanted to to understand the value that they brought to this kind of process. We're now looking at if you and if you want to think of it as an additional task order, you know, we're moving from what we have now. We're think, you know, we're going to add in season two and season three additional functionality. And we need the kinds of services that they provided in season one to extend to those. And and we're we're talking about things related to new rates and and other things that we may add along the way. So I would think of it as almost a task order extension of of contracts. The other thing that you brought up, Commissioner Carlson, I think is relative to security, I think is a really good thing for us to be aware of. And that's that whenever you have a pretty massive change as an organization, there's the opportunity for people to ghost as E web. And I think that's really what they're talking about. It's not just a systems issue, but people can take advantage of the opportunity to say, oh, E web is doing this. Hey, click here and I'll solve your problem. Well, clicking there might take you to someplace not not so pleasant. So I think as both cybersecurity, as well as just our 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 communication staff and and our customer service agents and anybody who's engaged with customers needs to be on the outlook for for signs that people may be impersonating E web in in situations like this. So it's not necessarily a systems issue. We have lots of security built into this. It's it's beyond that. And I think as an organization, we need to catch you to that. Brian?
Yeah, I'm confused and you can maybe help me. So I too saw this as an informational item. Are you asking for five million or ten million?
So on on the first one, you approved back in twenty twenty three, five million over five years, and we're asking to increase that from five to ten.
Okay, so that's five.
And then S C W, five million.
Another five. So you're asking for ten million. Okay, so um process, I I too question about this, which is a week before going live. And you're asking for another ten million dollars. And I'm really worried about rates and we're going. And I know we probably don't have a choice here, but I'm just thinking about process. We go through this process, we get right down to going live. And now we we have, we have to give you another ten million dollars.
So just careful, I'm just trying to, I want to answer the question right. So not asking for additional ten million on the project. These these dollars have been budgeted for from day one.
If they're already in the budget.
Already in the budget.
So this is just like when we get a consent calendar item that says ten million, you're going to just use
It's already in the budget. We're just asking for the approval to sign the two contracts. Yeah, sorry, it wasn't clear.
No, I just clarified it for me because I kind of felt backed up a little bit, but no.
Wouldn't do that.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. So my my other question is, is then the non English speaking customers get really intimidated with change. And we're going to have that for element of our contract of our customers covered. So when they confront change, change scares a lot of the people I know that don't speak English. And they're afraid to engage. Are we going to have that covered in communications?
I am going to check. I actually don't know which of our communications are translated into into Spanish. So I will definitely check on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I got.
Frank? I was just going to clarify, Travis, that that this isn't something we're bringing as part of the the go live effort, correct? That this is not a go live. This is beyond go live.
Yeah, for sure.
It's it's B G L, which is a new acronym, beyond go live. So that's 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 the new one. I I would I would echo, and I think just for for our purposes, that when we we go to extend contracts, we we probably need to go through a little bit more of a formal process on this as going forward.
Yeah, I would echo that. And I think if it if it doesn't mess us up on the timing, I'd love to see the same standard memo that we get for other extensions of contracts. Just even if it was just the scope of work, you know, spelled out for those that take it in in writing, you know, differently than we than we hear it. I think that'd be valuable. I'd propose that if, again, if it doesn't mess up, if if we need this authorization tonight, we should have that. We should know that. And if we don't, then propose we pump that to next meeting.
We do not need it tonight. Like I said, we're a little bit ahead of schedule on this. And so happy to write up two consent items for next board meeting.
So work for the rest of the board. Okay, great. Thanks, Travis. Mindy?
So I have a question for people who are not like, they're not internet savvy, people who still write checks to pay their bills. Will they have to update their their customer portal? Or can they just continue like business as usual?
They can absolutely continue receiving a paper bill in the mail, writing out their jacket and mailing it in. That is probably the one process that is not changing yet. Nobody has to participate in the customer portal if they don't want to. Yeah.
They'll have to write upside down and backwards. But other than that, it'll be okay.
I just know that, I mean, we just think that everybody's computer savvy and some people just aren't. And I echo Sonya's concern with just, I think about my elderly dad, and I'm always warning him, don't click on things that you don't know what they are. And I would hate for him to get his power like and water turned off because he's afraid that it is some kind of phishing thing, right? Right? No, there's definitely a a path for everybody, right? You can drive your check into the Dropbox. You can mail your check. You can put Walmart and pay. There's there's non digital ways to to interact with us.
And I assume that we'll be monitoring if there's some like odd drop off in people paying their bills on time for whatever reason, or people aren't signing up for the portal, like you have ways to monitor that, like something's not going right here with customers.
Right. Part of what you said is Travis described as it's a business process exception management. So it's why we bring on extra people to help us. Once that first that first billing run goes out, we are watching everything to see if there is anything unusual about about anything. So we're going to have a lot of exceptions that we're going to be working through just to make sure everything's working as it should. Yep.
Thank you. There's certain waves. Not everybody all at once. It's from, yes, we
Bill bicycle.
Roski?
Thank you. Couple of questions and then a comment. So you mentioned that you're going to stand up this this room with customer service people and a person that is walking around. And if you raise your hand, you can do it. I'm wondering, and that's that's at go live, but I'm I'm concerned about two months from go live when somebody didn't pay their bill because they didn't do something right. Are we giving the person who either raises their hand or the person that's walking around raising their hand the authority to help waive like extra fees and charges that are going to be incurred by by her father not figuring out the portal correctly and and missing and missing a a payment. And now they've got a late charge. Are we empowering our employees to not have to go three runs up to get that approval? Is that something we've thought about?
Say two things. So we have shut down the majority of the fees going into this, and we will decide what we're going to turn back on the fees. And so we get just you know, to your point, we want to make sure everything's working well before we turn them back on. And it's not just the floor walkers and the and the leads who will have that. All of the C S A's have the ability to do things. And we'll know if there is one issue with one customer, there's probably going to be more. So they would have the ability to do that. We also, it's why we have some subject matter experts on site who know the system really well, so we can get to that really quickly. Troubleshoot it, apply and fix across a group of customers if we need to. Yeah.
The second question is kind of related to these new contracts. The first contract, we got a project manager. Are we going to get a project manager with the S C W? Or is it just as needed?
So um the Advent group is going to be our delivery manager, project manager that will will do that work. All of the S C W will have their own internal project managers to partner with us, but
Okay. And then the last thing, this goes to the communication plan. I've been really encouraged by the relationship we have with our local news medias and getting our word out. I see one in the back of the room there. I think it would be great if we could, you know, make sure that we're putting press releases out and hopefully putting people in front of cameras. Because a lot of people, like like Sonya said, she's scrolling in for things. But if they see it on on K E Z I or in the register guard, it's gonna it will resonate, I think, a lot to a lot of people that are not tech savvy. And so if, I mean, obviously, that you have to have willing partners on both sides of that. But it seems to be that our communications department has established a well a well organized relationship with our local media outlets. And I think if we can tap into that as much as we can, that would be great. So that's just a heads up from from things that I've seen, you know, there's been stories on College Hill. There's been stories on all kinds of things. And again, that's shows the great work that our our com people are doing. And then lastly, you know, if you were in the room earlier today, you heard that I was in a fifth grade class today at, I think this one was the one at Edison. And one of the people said, oh, I've got a I've my my dad works at E web. And do you know such and such? And I said, well, no, what what does he do? And he said, they said, well, he's in a room and he does a lot of stuff on computers. And and I and I meant, I mentioned to him, I said, that person is just as important as the person that's in the bucket truck going up on the line. And they do a lot of work that makes sure that we get our water and our power. So there was a fifth grader that and a whole fifth grade class that learned how important the people that sit in an office and work on computers are. So I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Thanks, John. Frank, did you follow up for that?
Not the last comment, but the question. Are you, I'm accused of being a fifth grader? Is that no, just just a couple of things. First of all, I think we recognize as we go into this that that communications is incredibly important and and not just in one format, but in in many formats. And I think that's important. I was also going to mention before Julie mentioned it, that during this process, we're going to have a certain degree of grace and amnesty that we grant to people, you know, we'll turn fees fees on. We're not going to assume that everything's working great. And so we'll we'll approach it from a high degree of of sort of grace and amnesty. And then part of the reason that you go into and I I've heard it soft I C S, I've heard it warm I C S, I have I C S light. I'm not quite sure what it is. I just need to commissioners, you need to get your I C S training. That's a plug that Roger wanted me to make. But we'll be in I C S for some period of time so that we can have the ability to react on the fly, raise the flag, get some help. Two months down the road, we'll have the processes established further to have handle this as a standard process. So within the first month or so, we're going to be in this this sort of hyper care mode, and then we'll move into more of a standard process. So hopefully that that, you know, we won't just be discovering all kinds of new things in two months, but well, we'll we'll be prepared either way.
I'm going to take just a moment and make a couple of comments and then give it to you. Julie, I was thrilled to hear you say that people aren't going to have to re-register or re up their wallet so they can do payments the same way they have done. Thank you. That is fantastic. That was my first question. And I was so glad that you already took care of that. And I just want to say this is a big project. I've been talking about this since I got on the board, what, almost four years ago? And I know it's been a lot of work to get here. And so congratulations. And I hope you all get sleep on December second. No, well, I wish you sleep, even though it's thanks for the, thanks for the work. Yeah. More, Carlson?
Oh, I just, um, along the amnesty and kind of grace, the the messaging around, we're shutting off your power. Assuming that that will change, or I hope that that will be kind of a, hey, we recently changed our systems. We noticed you didn't pay, not this is your first notice of getting your power shut off. Like, there's other avenues that we will assume first that it's on our end versus sending out these scary news. Because I think that's that's more like joking to people.
I don't know the exact wording, Commissioner Carlson. I just know that Deborah Hart really likes to be collecting her money. And so I'm not sure that I'm, of course, I'm teasing, but I I don't know the exact processor wording, but I I know that we'll we'll treat it appropriately.
Yeah, there are steps. Yeah, there are steps that we go through as we start turning back on that collection process. There are steps you need to make sure that we're hitting. So we make sure, you know, that there aren't a large number of people that something happened to that, that they didn't pay their bills. So you go through those assessment checks and then you decide to start to check back on that, the process. It's kind of a small grant backup.
And it was on that, you know, automatic basis. It's like, oh, well, that got sent out. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. If there's nothing else, we'll go to the next topic. Thank you both. Water system development charges. Frank, Deborah, Karen. Just Frank.
Got it.
Yeah.
I'm glad that she cares about money, actually. Thank you, Deborah. So commissioners, good evening. I'll try and get us back on track. I know we ran a little bit over on that item. I think we're still on time from agenda perspective. And so try to take a look at sys, sys, system development charges. I'm just going to run through a couple of things. What we're really looking for tonight from commissioners is your perspective on a few questions that we can use to incorporate into some policy work that we'd like to bring back to the board. When we talk about policies again, and like I said earlier, we've rescheduled that for March. And this would be inclusive of that, that policy work. And so yes, SDCs are an opportunity for utilities to pay for capacity upfront. It's not necessarily mandatory. It is an opportunity. We do see that there's an opportunity here to codify some of the work we do around SDCs. Part of the challenge with SDC work is you don't do it on a routine enough basis. You need to find a way to capture your priorities, your mechanisms, your philosophies. Because you typically look at this every five years or every 10 years. And so you want to be able to pass something along in, in knowledge to, to future boards, future management. There's a few other things and I'll, I'll kind of, this is, this is a way of really sort of trying to capture SDCs. And, and really what it is doing is it is recognizing that when you're building infrastructure or you have infrastructure that has capacity there, that capacity is worth something. And is typically worth the portion of the capacity that you use to build it. And that is either through a past build and what it's valued at today, or there is some degree of capacity that's built into your future capital work. It's probably reasonable to think that even if you're not doing projects that are specific for capacity, that you would actually build some capacity in most of this infrastructure lasts for 50, 60, 80, 100 years. And you would recognize that in that process, you're going to build in some capacity into that, into that capital work. And so there is certain capital work, there are certain existing infrastructure that is eligible for SDCs, which means that as someone comes along and, and consumes, or you allocate that capacity to that developer or to that builder or that homeowner, whoever is, is consuming that capacity, that there is value to that and therefore charged to that. And then the question that really comes out of this, that we'd like to get some guidance from the board on is, is who and how is that paid for? If that capacity has value, then somebody who is consuming that value should pay for that should, and that can be split between either SDCs. These are costs that are actually incurred. So if it is not captured in an SDC, paid for by the developer, who may pass that on to owners or tenants, it's a very small group in that sense. If it's not paid for by that group, then it is, those are real costs they're paid for and absorbed in rates. And so there's a kind of who pays in this scenario, not whether this project is done or not. It's of that capacity that is realized or is eligible, who, who should pay for that philosophically? And so what we're asking for the board tonight, as we think about policies, bringing this back to the board, there's a few sort of key questions that we would like you to have a discussion on. It's not necessary for the board to come to a five zero consensus on any of these items. We do want to understand your, your varied perspectives. And the first one would be when a project requires or consumes system capacity, should the SDC eligible value of that capacity be, you know, paid for by that project? Paid for in the rate base? Is there some splitting of that value that should occur? As sort of one question. The other one, SDCs in some cases, can, are those something that should be, should it be different for different classes? You know, is, is a, a home project different from a commercial project? That can be a bit administratively challenging to, to do. We have in the past used grants under some cases to, I'm not going to say waive SDCs, but a grant has been used to offset SDCs for things such as affordable housing or something that has some degree of community good. That has the mechanism that we've used in the past. That's probably how we would prefer to do it in the future as opposed to having different SDCs. And then the third one, which was part of the discussion earlier, was we've tried to align the, the actual calculation of the SDCs, whatever that level might be with things that are consistent with other development charges. For example, with the city of Eugene, that's where the square footage came up with. It, it makes it very clear for developers that they don't have to parse their work out differently for an EWEB versus a city of Eugene. So there's, you know, is there value from the commissioner's perspective to using approaches that align with, with other types of charges that developers in this case, or homeowners, whoever's doing the construction might, might, might be having to adhere to or, or, or execute on. So the first one is kind of who pays? The second one is, is there a way or preferred method for which commissioners would want to look at subsidizing certain types of development? And then the third one is, do you agree with the, the, our approach around aligning with other types of charges associated with capacity or development? So those are the big questions we'd like you to discuss. And like I said, consensus is not necessarily required. But we definitely like to understand your perspectives on these three. Back to you.
Great. Thanks. Questions? Mindy?
I don't know that I have any questions, but I can tell you what I think about these three questions that you've posed, that I think that SDC should be paid as part of the project. That that it should be passed on to the specific users. I do think that there should be some type of grant program for things that are considered community good. So for affordable housing, I support that. And then I also concur that we should align our SDCs with the approach that the city takes.
So, so really appreciate you jumping in. You, you get the, do we have any EWEB chocolate bars left? We could, we could give them any. So, so thank you. The, sort of the flip side of, of, I'll say the developer pain in, in the, which is what you, you proposed is, do we want to foster further development by rate casing it? I mean, that's the trade off that we're looking at. And so now if you, if you go back to, to this, this question of who pays? If you look at, if you're doing development and let's say you're doing housing and the developer is paying, the developer will likely pass that on to whoever's owning or managing. And so those costs would be really borne by a set of tenants that's a smaller part of the population as opposed to now socializing, the opposite would be rate basing it and socializing it across the entire customer base. Now, if we want to, I'll say actively promote certain types of development. There is value in capacity. We, we've said that. You, you might say, well, let's socialize more of that as opposed to, okay, the beneficiary, it has value to the property. It has value to those people. Those people should bear that cost. And I think that's, that's what, what you proposed. The flip side of that is the board could look at this as some way to promote certain types of development. That would be the cost of, or the value of that capacity broadened out across the entire rate base.
I think my thoughts on that are, I personally have some thoughts on what type of development should be prioritized. I don't know that that's the job of this board to do it. I would love for that to be maybe a conversation that we have in our meetings that we have with the city. Because the city has housing and development goals. And so to me, that would be like a natural place where we kind of maybe align some of our policies with the larger development goals of the city. But I don't know that this board in general should really weigh in on how to, what to prioritize development wise. Is that kind of what you're, you're asking?
Sure. And, and I think the, what you also said, Commissioner Schlossberg was that, okay, that from a capacity value perspective, it's associated with the development. Now, if there's certain kinds of development that we, we think are important and have community value, the grant program would basically subsidize or offset those. And that would be based on what we decide is community good, which might align the city. And that's kind of what I'm hearing from.
Yeah. And again, I think that this is like a great, a great example of ways that the, the liaison that we have with the city, like that, that small group could really kind of hone the, the way that we do this program.
Given, given what you said, it would also probably significantly increase the cost of those SDCs. If a hundred percent of that capacity is compared to where we are today, it would likely drive those up, which we also know that those have gone, those are going to go up because we haven't looked at this as routinely as we should.
Brown and then Vravsky.
Thank you. So question, so SDCs came in 12 years ago. About that. And so everything built in this community before that was built, as the capacity was built with rates. So right now, if I tear down a restaurant on between sixth and seventh, right? Where they merged, the restaurant burned down, I put in a car wash and a C store. I get credit for the SDCs that, that, that was there, what was there. That's the way it works. And so you get credit for what was there, not what you're putting in. So if there was a hundred thousand dollars in SDC credits, you get them. But if you only use 50,000 of them, where do those SDC credits go? That capacity, because there's a ton of capacity that's not used. Cause there's no more green field development around here. It's all going to be brown field. We're going to redevelop properties. So if you redevelop a property, you tear one down, you get credit for what was there on your new SDCs. So you're not, very few people can use them. So if you had a hundred thousand dollars, if restaurant had a hundred thousand dollars in SDC fees for water, and I put in a car wash and it only uses 50, that's a real life example. Where does that $50,000 with the capacity go?
Mr. Brown, I'm not familiar with the crediting of crediting back of SDCs. I'm not sure whether, well, that may be how the city does it. I'm not.
Yeah, they do.
As familiar with.
You get, you get transportation parks, sewer, water.
Sure. And I don't know, have we historically credited back to you?
While he's online and he may.
I, I don't know the answer to your question fully.
What I'm trying to do is just see, there's a pool of credits that, that's, that's just getting left on the table and somehow incorporate that into this conversation.
I think that some of that, Commissioner Brown, and we'll go to Wally, who's on the big screen in the back. The, the, there is some value to the unused capacity that was, that was there. I don't know about this crediting back if you reverse that. So.
You can't transfer them. You can, you got to use them on site.
Right. And that.
We do it.
I'm not sure on the crediting back, but we do take into account if there was a previous SDC applied to that property and a, a new development takes over that property, that gets subtracted from whatever SDC they pay for.
Right. So if you had a hundred thousand there and you only use 50, there's 50,000 in SDC credits that can't be used any other place. And that's 50,000 in capacity that's back into the system, but nobody gets to use it.
Right. Okay. So I'm not sure exactly how that, I'm saying like, if there's, there was $50,000 paid in SDCs and a new development comes in and needs a hundred thousand, we would only charge them 50,000.
That's correct. But if you, but if it's a hundred thousand dollars, you know, you, you get credit for what was there. So you tear down a restaurant, it had a hundred, to replace it would have been a hundred thousand. You take 50 out, there's 50 back in the system and it just disappears of capacity.
And I'm not sure of a situation like that. I'd have to dig into that and I can get back to you on it.
Yeah. Commissioner Brown, we, we can look into that specific. I think that if we approach this where SDCs really focus the SDC discussion on yet to be used, unused capacity, we'll, we'll figure out the crediting piece of it, but on unused capacity going forward, how would you approach, how would you want to approach unused capacity? Let's say it's either in there already, someone is adding to it or you know, we were, we're having to add capacity for that. So that's, that's I, I guess I would.
Use it for like Mindy's case. She said she wants to grant for low income housing. So the restaurant we tore down on sixth and seventh, they're burned down, had a hundred thousand bucks there and we could only use 50. There's 50,000 of that capacity that stayed in the system, can't be used anywhere else. It just disappeared. Why can't we get 50,000 credit and let her use it for her low income housing project instead of having to take it out of somebody else's spot? Is, is my point, because I, my concern is that these SDC fees, this last proposal you've had were off the charts. And it would.
It was a significant increase. I think the, the, the opt a chart piece would be, so this is this part down here where you have X or Y and a hundred percent, this is a zero sum game. So if we don't charge an SDC, that goes into future rates. So somebody is paying for, for that, no matter, no, no matter what. And we, we have budgeted in a certain degree of SDC assumptions going forward. And if we back off that assumption, for, for whatever reason, it should, it could be crediting. It could be that the board just decides we don't want to do SDCs, that becomes rate based. So there is some degree of having to draw the line and look forward as opposed to totally looking back on, you know, on, on this issue relative to crediting. So that's, that's the piece that I think we're trying to wrestle through first is if there's value in capacity, somebody pays for it, either through SDCs or through the rate base. So.
Okay. Well, I can have this conversation later. I'll, I'll use Heineck as an example.
I, I think there's, you, you brought up Commissioner Brown, I think some, some things that we have to make sure we're covering, which is there's, there's some intricacies into the examples here that we, when we start talking about policy, we want to make sure that we're not creating some unintended consequences from it.
Well, and one of your questions was, should we follow the city of Eugene's methodology for SDCs for consistency, right? That was one of your last questions on the slide. If, if they're doing some sort of ability to credit, maybe that's one of the ways in which we would like to mirror the way the city of Eugene's doing it.
Yeah. I just, I just think there's a lot of capacity that's left into the system that people have paid for and that they have to walk away from when they redevelop. I mean, what's the capacity at Heineck's? I don't know where you use. Who's going to get that?
All right. So, yeah.
I'm good.
All right. Vravsky?
Yeah, I think that I kind of spurred this, I think this, when I, when I pissed a fit for the large increases that were being proposed. And, and mostly with those, I was, I was more worried about the methodology and the project lists and how, how the project lists bought, drove the methodology to getting to us. So that, that was what kind of do this. Now we're moving towards the policy side. So for me, I see the second bullet point of a blended, blended methodology as the one that I would lean into. And, and the reason I say that is I don't want to pick winners and user losers of, of, of economic development. But I see the community as a whole, winning from economic development and the utility winning from economic development. You know, one of the example that I can give to you is back when we were looking. You know, one of, the example that I can give to you is back when we were looking at uh, efficiencies. And well, if you, if somebody buys a uh, heat pump water heater. Instead of a gas water heater, the impact to, to EWEB is gonna be increased because they're using more electricity. And so are, we make more money from that. Well, if, if the system as a whole. Grows, if the pie grows, are, it, the capacity is increased. But part of that, we, we get gains from that because the community as a whole is increasing. We're selling more power, we're selling more water, we're making, we're making more, more money. And so to me, especially in these times, and it's, it's so hard when you're talking about doing policies that are going forward. Five, ten, fifteen years, you know, we saw a policy that we put forward uh, on a different issue. That may be not what we need today. But today, our, our economy needs development. We need housing and some of the barriers that we are seeing to housing and business development are system development charges. So I don't think that I want to totally put it onto the, onto the broader rate base. But I think that our rate base and our community can afford to absorb some of that. I mean, and we're not talking huge numbers here, it's a million or two million dollars a year that could be spread out. Amongst the, partially amongst the developers, so that they're paying. They're, they're taking a bite at the apple, but our community is also getting a, a, uh, an apple pie out of this as well. So that's where I land. I'm not exactly sure what you're meaning when you say, should we follow the city's model? Because that, that's too vague, I gotta know what that means. The city's model of picking the project list. The city's model of, of uh, what items are eligible or their uh. Percentage-wise, I, I need to be a little bit clearer, more clear on what that means. Um, I, I can see it, you know, if it's square footage or that type of thing, yeah, I can go with that. But, but to put a water SDC as the same as a park SDC. Who's using the, who's using the water pipes and who's using the parks? You know, they're, they're different, so I need a little more information before I can come down on that.
Just, uh, thank you Commissioner, um, just for clarification. What's meant hereby follow the, the cities, it is the pricing mechanism of which it's recovered. So using the same square footage, for example, as you're dividing lines, it's what a developer would see. It's not the approach that we would take to decide what's SDC eligible and, and what isn't. And so that is, um, that's not what we meant. We didn't mean those internal mechanisms, we meant the, the pricing mechanisms. Just so a developer doesn't have to worry about two or three different standards of which they're gonna have to calculate their projects. SDCs um, for that, that's, that's really what we meant by this. Certainly understand your point on economic development, I think what you're saying is, and, and. What, what was the term you used? You pitched a fit, is that? The outcome, I, I remember that word, I just don't like this outcome. Um, I, I think what we're really, we're recognizing that this project list that we have, and you can like it or not, or say this is capacity or this isn't. There is a value that, of that work that needs to be paid for by somebody. And SDCs is a methodology by which you can charge one group over another and you can basically pre-charge for that capacity. Um, or if you don't do that, then you charge the standard rate base. And what you're saying is some degree of division there to facilitate uh, development is something that you would. Is kind of on, on your list. Now, I would say that a million dollars, while it's the baseline, depending on the approach we take, could go up or down. And on the water utility, roughly four hundred thousand dollars represents a one percent rate increase. So a million dollars is not insignificant, depending on how you want to look at that going up and down. So it is something that will have to be, be cognizant of.
Sonya?
So, you know, when I think about SDC charges and, and how we apply them and the percentages. Kind of to look back at what, why did we even make SDCs in the beginning? And for me, it, it appears that we wanted that cost to be, you know, borne by developers. And I, I would assume that that is a mechanism to keep growth at bay. You know, you want them to pay their, the, you know, for the burden that they're putting on the system. And I'm trying to balance that against the impact that it has on development projects. And I did a little bit of, you know, looking at kind of the, the background of it, I found an Eco Northwest study that. Said that SDCs affect some housing more than others, smaller entry-level homes, lower-cost middle housing and apartments. And communities with weaker markets are disproportionately affected by SDCs. High-end, single-family detached housing is generally impacted least. And part of that, I'm, I'm guessing is that those housing projects um. Are, are going to be lower cost in general, so if you have a bigger SDC fee on it. And, you know, you have a lower-income housing project versus higher-income housing project of roughly the same size. This one's going to get more disproportionately impacted. So for me, we need housing, not just because we want our customer base to increase. Because I think, you know, we've talked about our capacity um, overall, and when we think about our capacity to sell power and. Not so much water, but mostly power, we're, we're going to be constrained. And so we do have to bring on other, um, you know, other developments that, or other um, sources of energy. That actually could raise rates even more, so it's not growth for the sake of growth necessarily. But we do have people that are homeless and we have people that are struggling to get by because there just isn't enough housing. And so for me, I, I would balance it more on having it more rate side. Because we do need more of those homes and that also impacts the rates that. You know, people pay in the rental housing market that impacts lower-income people too. So, and but given the current history of where we're at, I would lean more towards having lower SDC. Charges because we need more of these housing projects to be. And then I like the idea about having grants for community good projects. Again, the more of those that we can have out there and the more housing that we can have in general. I think the more, the better off our community will be. And then um. I want it to align with the city, but I'm really annoyed at how the city's um, process is set up. So I'm torn on that one. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Commissioner Carlson, the, I, I would point out one thing about the origins of SDCs, which. They, they were not originally created necessarily because of their impact on development. It was primarily for smaller utilities to pre-fund capacity work that they needed to do. Um, in their system, so it was a, it was basically a financial mechanism for. Um, utilities that quite honestly now don't have the financial strength that EWEB has. I would say fifteen years ago, or whenever uh, um, Christian Brown knows this apparently more specifically than I do when they started. Um, EWEB's water utility was in a much different financial position than we are now. Um, and so it was really born out of the ability to um, put in infrastructure in support of development. And having a way for a utility to fund that, so that's, that, it wasn't to discourage development per se. The other thing that I think we need to take a look at, and you touched on it. Was when we looked at the SDC charge, and I think this was in the data that, that you requested. Because you were concerned about the impact on housing units. That the larger projects, actually the per-unit allocation of those SDCs. Um, was fairly low, even though the SDC in, in its lump seemed like a lot. When you broke it down to the per-unit was actually um, pretty affordable. But I think I heard from you. Yeah, I think I've heard from you is that, that there is an importance on development. And um, some degree of, of socialization to facilitate that development, whether that be through SDCs. Or potentially through grants is something that, that you find sort of high on your priority list. Is that fair?
I'm afraid you're gonna get mixed messages, uh, I.
And it's not unusual for me, actually, President McCray, but that's, that's okay.
It's eight forty, it's just like, they're all over the place.
Wait till we get to the next.
Spattered on the ground. I'm, I'm more with Mindy here in terms of, I feel like, uh, given the pressure that we have right now on rates. That if this gives us a tool to relieve some of the pressure on rates and um, and see those expenses picked up by. The, by new development, I think that's reasonable. Uh, you know, what the split is, I don't know, but it seems like, uh, from my perspective, the majority should be. On the new projects. Um, on your question number three about uh, following the City View Jeans approach. I think that would be a useful way to go. In terms of your question number two about, should we favor sometimes a capacity-consuming develops, development over others? For me, I would want to see the different types of projects and what kind of capacity they take. And, and some of, um, what Sonya was talking about, you know, where, where is the alignment in terms of the. Cost of construction compared to the SDC, like those percentages. And I appreciate what you're saying is that smaller projects tend to have a relatively small individual SDC for that project. But I think, at least for me, to think about whether or where we would adjust those SDCs. I'd wanna have a little bit deeper dive to think about that.
In general, uh, uh, Commissioner McCray, I think what, what could probably be assumed is if, if a developer is. Is developing a piece of property for some particular purpose, then. An SDC charge would basically be passed on to the beneficiary of that service. Now, that's, that may be a business, a commercial operation, if it's multifamily housing, it's gonna be in the form of rent or tenants. And so um, I, I think one of the considerations we have to, to take is that. Charge, just because we're charging an SDC to a particular entity, uh, entity of cause, if you want to call it that. It's not gonna stay there, it's gonna be passed through to a different, a, a different either beneficiary. Or create a, a burden for whoever is leasing or moving into that building or, or whatever. And, and so I think that, that is something we'll have to consider when we, we look at it. When we were thinking about particular classes, it was more residential, commercial, multifamily, single. I mean, those, we were talking a bit more broad. Um, and so those are just some of the things that we'll have to consider. And it's, by the way, it's, it isn't unusual that I get different perspectives from different commissioners on, on this type of thing. We'll have to figure out how to navigate that through and, and capture it in a way that I think captures the essence of what this board thinks is important in policy. And then we'll have to um, sort of double-check that based on some real situations such as Commissioner Brown pointed out.
Yeah, I would be supportive of a SDC trade program or um, credit program, it seems like that's kind of a fair way to manage that. My guess is actually if you drop a proposed percentage for how much should be funded by SDCs versus rates, we're probably not all that far away.
Yeah, I think, I, I think if we start with the original premise that there is some value in capacity.
Yeah.
With available capacity, consumed capacity, that there's going to be some netting effect to that, and that's probably fair. If we want to look at this as how we allocate those costs to customers. Um, it, it may not um, be something that is historically consistent with what we've done, but I think it's something we're gonna have to look at.
Alright.
I think I got more than enough to, to work with on, on this one.
Alright.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the dialogue, it, it, it is helpful.
Good. I'm glad it's helpful for you, Frank.
It'll be really helpful, helpful over an IPA later.
I do feel like maybe we should change our beverage um, standards here. This is very clear.
I'm just kidding.
I am too, Frank. Uh, on to sixteen, Board Session One, Mission Vision.
Yeah, uh, Commissioners, this is really a precursor, I know that when we reviewed the strategic plan um, a, a couple of months ago. We talked about this might be an opportunity to uh, look forward and as opposed to maybe tweaking what we have is to look at things. Um, up in a, in a fresh way. Uh, there are some pros and cons to that. And um, we'll, we'll kind of run through those really quickly and then I'll pose a number of other questions for the board to give me. Six different opinion-ons from the five of you. Um, and that's, that's certainly a very helpful, actually. And so, you know, we created these phases, the strategic plan uh, started in twenty eighteen. We were about halfway through, a little over halfway through its, its evolution. We're kind of in this phase two, whereas Commissioners really know this more recently, is we're putting a lot of puzzle pieces together. Whether that's AMI or the CIS project, we're, we're building rate design is a piece of that, the Bonneville contract. There's a lot of different pieces to that around resiliency and some of the priorities. We also sort of stated our mission uh, in the, in the strategic plan. It's, it's pretty common for organizations to have a separate mission and vision and values statement. Of which the, the strategic plan then is support of moving the mission toward the vision. So it's, it's okay to actually separate those. Um, but as a precursor to sort of any strategic conversation, we wanted to tee up a couple of questions. Um, related to this sort of strategic journey. And this was, this was something that we're just kind of uh, looking at over time. Um, throughout the next year or so, multiple touchpoints with the board, I didn't put them all on here. But really work, uh, walking through a journey that would um, start to align the board, align the organization. Around um, sort of the next phases um, of our evolution as an organization. Um, but to start with, um, you have to really understand what your mission is as an organization. And so, well, again, kind of like the last conversation, not necessarily to form consensus. But wanted to understand the individual commissioners' different perspectives. On things that would roll into uh, how we craft and sort of organize our mission. Um, and also our vision, the mission being really what we do today, why we exist. The vision being this is where we want to go, this is our, our future state. And so there's really two questions. Um, what is EWEB's role in the community? And there's just our two sub-questions to that. Um, what are things that we do that we should do more of, really focus on? What are things that we potentially should start doing? Uh, the flip side of that is, is also um, some of the things that, what is EWEB's, what is not EWEB's role in the community? And are there things that we should do less of, or are there things that we should stop doing? And so um, kind of use those to, to tee up the different components as far as why we exist and what we do. And then we'll take that and depending on the different perspectives, how narrow or why they might be. And kind of craft a jump-off point to um, some strategic assessments. We also have Tim coming on in January, we'll wanna uh, integrate him into the process. I'm, I'm glad he's here tonight. Um, and we'll um, have the opportunity to look at this as. As kind of the basis for, for our development work. And so um, really, uh, President McCray, I'm just gonna pass this back to you with these. Sort of one A B and two A B, and you can take it in whatever order you want to do it. Um, and sort of get the perspectives out there on the table.
Alright, Sonya.
When you're doing more of, or start doing, the only thing that comes to mind for me is just figuring out how we can continue to be more inclusive. Um, I think Commissioner Brown's point earlier about, you know, particular community perspectives are missing. In a lot of the work that we, that we do. And so to the extent that we can bring that community in so that they are involved, and I think it's gonna be even more critical over the coming years. Um, to do that, uh, that, that, and, and other projects and other things, we're already doing so much. I just want you all to be able to do that well. We're, we're rebuilding a lot of infrastructure, the kinds of uh. The focus that we, for the trajectory that we're on feels very good. And we have started down those pathways and I, it just feels to me like there's a lot. You know, we're midway through it, we just need to keep that ball rolling. Um, in terms of doing less of, um. You know, for me, I, I just, I still believe in the plan that we set out to achieve and I want to continue marching forward on that.
Thanks. John?
The things that we should start doing more of, I think, um. We've got this program locally where we're trying to get everybody for electrification and climate change and things such as that. But yet we're letting AI and all the data centers suck the life out of what little bit of renewable energy there's left. And we, I would like to see us take a much more active role in at least addressing that. And, you know, we've got the government subsidizing the placement of all of those right now. And yet we're asking all, all the people in our rate pairs to make these changes. And yet we're asking all, all the people in our rate pairs to make these changes and make these sacrifices. And in some cases, spend more money for commodity. I'll, I'll name a climate change and, and renewables. And I would like to see, take, take us a much more accurate role in that and just start advocating more for saying, okay, what's more important? Because if we have these energy shortages in 2027 and 2028, that's just right around the corner. So I'd like to see us do more of that personally on a, as a, as an organization with the largest one in the state. So why don't we walk in with a big stick? Things that we should do less of, I think, I can't think of that. I think we're doing, doing the right thing, but I, I would just like to see more advocacy to get and say, if there's just so much of a finite amount of power, let's get it to the people that need it, not the big AI centers and all that stuff. They can get their own.
We charge SDC fees on.
The fact that the.
There's mixing of metaphors here. I, I don't quite understand.
Three mile island for it. I mean, come on. That's good gigs.
Some, and some interesting perspectives. So Commissioner Carlson, you spoke about inclusive. It's really a focus on the customer end of, of this, you know, we're, if, if we're a vertically integrated organization, you're saying there's an inclusive aspect that we need to pay attention to. At the same time, Commissioner Brown, you're talking about pushing upstream. So now we're, you know, the first two responses was things we, okay, now you're, you're, you're pushing upstream, you're pushing downstream. Both are important, but they both start to, to kind of highlight the fact that we are a vertically integrated organization. And there are prices that come with being a vertically integrated organization. And it's tough to focus on both ends. That's, that's a piece that I think we've struggled with overall as an organization, not saying we, we can't. It's, it's part of our apparent, you know, you see it as part of our role in the community. We have to pay attention to the customers. We also have to ensure our, the security of our supply that's affordable and, and, and reliable. So I appreciate the two, the two perspectives already.
Are you ready for more?
I'm ready for more. I, I.
All right, Mindy?
Well, I strongly agree with John Brown's call for more legislative advocacy. I think that that is an area where we could maybe protect some of our interests a little bit more. And I know that Jason works very hard and you know, we have a legislative agenda, but I also think about things like with watershed protection and things like that, like we, we do a lot of work and there's not a lot of like legislative protection necessarily or, or laws that maybe make our work a little easier. I know that's not generally our role to go out and do a lot of that kind of advocacy that way. It seems like we kind of support things that are put out there or not support them. But I think that that's an area where we could maybe be a little stronger in. And then the other thing that I think maybe we should do a little more of, we're already doing quite a bit, but I think the resiliency piece. But I know that, that kind of like has its tentacles throughout the organization, but I just think about these coming years, I think about like scarcity of, of resources or environmental pressures. And I know we have our print pledge to prepare. We have our, our new integrated software system and all of that. But I do think that there's a, a way that we can help the community more in resiliency. I, I don't have specifics now, but I think that, that there's some opportunity there. In terms of what we should do less of, the only thing that comes to mind is kind of the, the performative public engagement things. I do feel like we, we are really lucky in this community that we have a publicly owned utility. And I think that a lot of people expect a lot of things from us, but we represent a lot of different people. And I just think that we have to be careful sometimes when we do kind of public processes, what we're, what, what people can expect from it, because I think that we kind of set a trap for ourselves sometimes. And then the last thing I just want to comment on is our vision. I know you don't, maybe don't want us to dig in deep, but just reading our vision, I find it kind of interesting that our vision is a local utility that inspires our customer owners to invest in us and rely on us. Well, I feel like our customer owners have no choice. So I don't know what that necessarily means to invest in us and they have to rely on us. So that, that just kind of jumped out at me.
Follow-up question.
Please.
Commissioner, so, so thank you, and I appreciate the advocacy for our interests perspective. I would kind of want to gauge what you think our interests are. So when, when we think about the services that we provide, how would you characterize the services that we provide? I mean, it's, it's, so when we, we advocate for a certain thing, what are we advocating for? From your perspective, I love the no public healings anymore, that, that part I.
No, I did not say no.
Oh, that's, that's what I heard.
No, no, no.
Sorry, but I jumped the gun there.
I mean, okay, so with water, I think that we're providing clean water to our customers. So there's many ways that we can do that, right? We can invest in treatment plants, but what we've chosen to do is to protect our watershed. So in providing clean water, are there legislative things that can help us do that so that it's not all on us to do it? We want to provide carbon, you know, as much carbon free electricity as possible, renewables. So I know that we are supportive of different bills and things that come up through the legislature, but maybe there's ways that we can increase that a little bit more. Same, same with our, I mean, with our goals, with resiliency, things like that.
Great, yeah, appreciate that. Thank you.
Who are we and why, why do we accept? I mean, that's right here on, on the cert, gene water and electric port. We could just go back to making sure that when you plug in the, the plug, it, it turns on and the water comes out of the spigot. Yeah, but we, we go a lot further than that. We, we, we looked to our community values as to how we do that. But we want as, as carbon free electricity as we can get. We want as clean a water as we can get. These are things that other utilities aren't quite as vested in, you know, there's a lot of utilities that just, I mean, you can, you can purify water that you wouldn't even want to put your toe in and, and there's treatment plants that'll make it so you can drink it. But that's not, we want to start with clean water so that we don't have to do as much as that. So that's where the vertically integrated part comes into it. We could just go to be a a power and water company, but I think we're more than that because we're Eugene Water and Electric Board. And the Eugene part of it goes to the values of our community. As far as things that we should do more of, I'm with Mindy. I think that, you know, Sonya's, Sonya's worried about the grid and, and John's worried about the, the grid and this and that. For me, I'm looking forward 10, 15, 20 years from now. And I think that water is going to be one of the commodities of the, of the next generations. And so for me, source protection is something that I don't think we can do enough of. I, I, I know that when I say that, it's, we can't do enough of it because of our limited financial capacity. I would love to do as much as we can, but we, we have limited capacity, but source protection and making sure that our, our watersheds are, are valued as the, the resource that they are, I think is an important thing for me personally. What things should we do less of? Five-hour board meetings are something that I would like to do less of.
We're only at four.
Okay. And things that we should stop doing? I think that that's something that I would, I mean, I can't answer that. I think I would like to hear that more from staff. It's like, hey, we're doing some things that are, that are, we're just spinning wheels and we don't need to really do those to, to accomplish our mission. You know, so if staff could identify some things that say, you know, we're doing this, I've got this thing and it really isn't adding to the value of the utility or what we're bringing our customers. If you could bring those things to us and say, do we still need to do these? Or do we need to do them at this extent? That would be something that I would be interested in looking at. I can't really say right now of something that I would like to stop doing. One of the things that I would, again, like to lean into, and we've, we've tried it, but I still want to keep trying it, is figuring out a way to help make our rental stock more efficient. So that our low, so that the people that are living in our, in our rental units have lower utility bills and better places to live. Now, I know we've, we've kicked that can two or three times to try and get something out of it. But I, that's something that I would still like to try and do and figure out if there's ways that we can do that. I think that's a laudable goal and something that I would like to, to have on my things that have, things that have been done while I was commissioner. So those, that's kind of where I'm at.
Nothing from you?
Great. All right. Have you gone?
I haven't.
Okay.
And I've been thinking about these questions and I'm not sure I have any great answers. Yeah, the only thing I want to do less of is like owning Lieberg. Can we, can we just sell that to somebody who can?
Well, just, just a few observations. So several of you really talked about, and I'll characterize this as the fact that when we say delivery, you know, that's, that's in our mission now. We're, we're delivering two essential services. One is drinking water and the other is electricity. And nobody really consumes electricity. If you do, that's kind of dangerous. I mean, you don't want to be drinking electricity. But there's, there's comfort that comes along with that. We're, we're selling the, the results of that. Several of you mentioned the importance of ensuring our supplies, whether that be the grid, whether that be drinking water, source protection. There is some role that we have to play going forward that ensures access to these essential services in the future. And what are we going to do to ensure that access going forward? Nobody mentioned becoming less vertically integrated. Nobody mentioned fiber. We have connectivity into the homes. You thought, you thought twice about it.
Want to bring it up. I don't want to do more of that.
Okay, do, we're, so nobody mentioned that we do, when we talk about delivery, that could be part of a delivery model. If you wanted to focus on the customer relationship and say, let's, let's treat the supply chain as something that, that to, to your point, Commissioner Slosbrook, there's things that we don't all have to take on, that we could lean into partnerships on. We could focus more on the customer relationship, the investments in that, not necessarily ensuring the supply. That's not what I heard. I heard that these are essential services and ensuring the, you know, the supply side, the recognizing the importance of the supply side of that, both water and through grid and through watershed protection is one, one of the things that this board sees as highly strategic going forward, that how we get there, yes, that's, that's important. But that's one kind of, I'll say, consistent thing that I probably heard, heard across the, across the board.
Thanks for the summary. Brofsky?
I'm not going to let you off the hook here, Matt. You know, you, you've got a, a couple more months here. You've got four years of experience. We want to know what your, your feeling on this is. So no, you can't just say no. We want, I want to know what your four years of experience and, and what you've learned and where you want to see this utility going. I don't want you to just say, I'm lame duck, I don't have to answer that question.
I'm happy to try and answer the question. I mean, I think, you know, I've already, I've already spoke to my interest in watershed protection and, and source protection, right? And especially in the watersheds that we haven't invested in yet. So I think that is a place where I would see us leaning in and doing more. Most of it actually getting, I think Mindy had it like, they're just curveballs that are coming at us faster than we're going to be able to handle them. So I think the more we can set ourselves up to have diverse redundant systems to the greatest degree possible without, you know, going broke. Cause I know that becomes expensive the more you do that. But to, to the extent that we can prepare for curveballs, I think that's what I would do more of. I think Kelly Hill has a really solid sense of what those things are likely to look like and where we could best invest there. Actually, the things that I think we could do, do less of, we have a couple of like niche programs that are like, like carbon credits and things like that. And I think they're interesting. I'm not sure we're the best vendor for those. And I, you know, I think we've tried them and I don't know that they're giving us a whole bunch of benefit as an organization. And I, you know, as, as useful as they seem like they be, I'm not sure that's a place where I'd keep carrying those. Unless, you know, if the staff feel like, you know, we're lining up to really knock it down in the next year and the year after that, with those programs, you know, I'd, I'd be interested in that, but it, it felt like at least initially it wasn't gaining a lot of traction. I would like to let, own less of Lieberg for real. I mean, I, you know, I don't think we can do that, but it does feel like there are big projects that have huge potential risks associated with them. For real, potentially being another. And I think just as we're making really big investments, we're about to make a huge investment in another water treatment plant on the Willamette, that we do the best we can of thinking about what could possibly make this thing become obsolete? So that we don't dump a whole bunch of money into something that becomes obsolete. I heard secondhand that Springfield, the cost for them to build their new water treatment plant on the McKenzie has doubled in the last couple of years. And I just wondered, I was like, does that change their conversation with us? I don't know, but I think it'd be worth having those conversations before we make that. I mean, I know we're already headed down the road of another treatment plant. I'm totally in support of doing that. I just think as things are changing very, very quickly for a bunch of different actors and partners, that having those conversations as we go to make sure we're not missing an opportunity would be valuable.
Thank you. So I, I, I appreciate the input. I, I think that there's some, there's some things to weigh through relative to not just sort of why we exist, but where that leads us to from a priorities perspective. And, and how we want to navigate through some of these, some of these issues going forward. There I, as, as most of you know, I, I came out of the private sector. In the private sector, if you wanted to do something, you just, you'd just go do it. I would say that, that one of the things that is, is around efficiency and focus and this sort of trade off between focus and scale that, that sometimes we talk about. We, we operate in a slightly different environment here. There's 80 board policies, there's 50 active resolutions, there's a, a bunch of different statutes and a bunch of public process that goes along with it. And some of that is the construct of being a public utility. But what we're hearing is we need to be inclusive as we go forward. We need to look at protecting our sources. The sources are, the sources, there's two things that I think make us really unique. One are the sources that we have and the McKenzie River probably being the most unique source, both water and electric that we have. And the other is the touch point into every single premise in the city. And those are two, two opposite ends of the, of the spectrum. And what we do in between is delivery. And so how we do that and what we focus on is something that, that we'll have to discuss a little bit further. But connecting those two is, is really what we do as an organization. So we need to, we need to figure out within that construct, what is it we focus on? What can we say, maybe isn't it, yeah, we like it, it may be important at some level, but relative to the others, these things, how do we prioritize them? And so that's the point of a strategy is to figure out what you use to prioritize your work. So we'll, we'll continue it. So it was a interesting kickoff and appreciate everybody's perspective. So it was a interesting kickoff and appreciate everybody's perspectives. I I think that you all have contributed to the strategy and where it's at now. And we'll have to see how much we think it it might. I I I do agree, Commissioner Carlson, I feel good about where we are in the strategy. I also think part of being strategic is starting to think about what's beyond that. And I think we have to start with that, and so that's part of the intent here. But I I think I got more than what I deserved. So thanks, President McCray, and and I think I'll just pass it back to you and we can move on.
All right, yeah, I would concur that the existing strategic plan, I think, is really solid. I think, you know, we're starting from a really good spot.
Yeah, go ahead. Looking beyond that kind of trajectory, just there's the right now for me that it's very hard to prognosticate past a few months from now even.
Yeah, and and agreed. And and maybe part of the strategy is you develop enough flexibility that you can handle multiple futures. And maybe that becomes your near term strategy, and that that may be one that we have to look at. So I think I'm next on the agenda for future agendas. We do have a a packed December and a packed January. We've, because of that, we've moved a few things, specifically the policy work out to March. President McCray, I'll probably want to get some of your thoughts on those policies, maybe one on one. Since you won't be with us in March, you're welcome to come back and participate in that discussion. That freed up a little bit of time in December to get some some various updates on things as well as it's January. We have some things going on as well around goals for next year and some of the things that we want to work on there. So I'll just say we're we're continuing to tweak with the agendas just to just to make sure we're spending the right amount of time on on meaty subjects and, you know, making good use of your time. So.
Great. Anything, any questions about what's on the future list? No, all right, to board wrap up then? Final comments?
Any policies? It's, I think it's 80 something board policies. Last time I checked, I don't, I'm looking at Ann, there's, she's probably going to correct me. I actually said something that Ann doesn't know, which is amazing.
You don't have memorized?
The the last time I looked, it was maybe I exaggerate, 60 to 80 board policies. And then we had, when we looked a couple of years ago, we had over 50 active resolutions in place. So you're you're a high burden group, John, that just have to pay attention to you.
I think I think I've probably been involved in.
Okay, so you're one out of 65. I think, yeah.
No, I'm board rep. I'm not going to be here in December, but I'd just like to thank you for your leadership from the last year and everything. I'm not going to get to do, if I did it, you know, remotely, it would be so disingenuous and be pathetic because I would be lying.
I just mute you.
So I'd really like to thank you and acknowledge that because I know it's not easy to take the gavel and run it up for four or five hours. But that's all right, I won't ever say anything about a five hour meeting. But Matt, it's been, it's been good and I won't see you again. Well, I will, I'm sure we'll run into each other on the river someplace. But thank you for your leadership and for being here for the last four years. Thank you.
I want to acknowledge Tim Morris, who's in the audience and has been attending meetings for the better part of the last year. And congratulations on getting a seat and condolences. And I'm excited that you're going to be jumping in here soon. So thanks for boning up on what's going on. Appreciate that.
So now there's multiple personalities involved because used to be five commissioners and 15 personalities. And how many are there going to be now? I guess that we'll have to wait and see what.
It's going to get very awkward, Frank.
Talk to my therapist.
Yeah, and when 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 we were talking about meter sizes, that's the size of the fire hose that you're going to be drinking out of the next couple of. I think you're at about three inch right now, but it'll get down to manageable size.
All right, anything else?
All right. Thank you, commissioners.